I'd like to call this public safety meeting to order at 6:01 on Monday, September 15th. Our first order of business is to approve the minutes from the June 23rd meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
And I will second that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that motion passes. Our second order of business is a communication from Fire Chief Fairbanks regarding the Neighborhood Paramedic Program and an annual update from firefighter and paramedic Oliver Harper. Gentlemen, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'd like to again thank everyone for giving us this opportunity to kind of showcase what our Neighborhood Paramedic Program has been up to over the last year. This is Oliver Harper to my left. He has been in the position for almost a year, about 11 months and change. So, we always kind of look forward to seeing what has transpired and how the program has evolved to help our citizens specifically here in Lakewood. So with no further ado, I'll turn the floor over to Oliver.
So on the agenda here first, oh boy, just kind of some housekeeping on how it looked this time last year, and then new things we've gotten into, some struggles I've had, and then some future planning to see what it can become later down the road here. This time last year, it kind of, as you are aware, fall prevention was the bread and butter and kind of the infancy of the program. Each visit had a smoke alarm inspection. I think since then, I've added in things like reconcile medications. I started working a lot with Lakewood Alive to do an aging in place assessment to kind of gather all the resources the city offers kind of in-house. I've since added doing a lot more primary care doctor visits, or I'm sorry, helping the primary care be involved more with the patients, because it seems like they're kind of on the outskirts a lot. And now we kind of partnered with a chronic condition clinic here in the city to have some referrals go both ways, which is going to be again helpful for keeping people out of the hospital and keep them safe at home. New initiatives we began, we partnered with the Centers, it's a behavioral health urgent care down in Gordon Square. We found there was just a huge volume of mental health calls that were not critical, they weren't violent, and not actively trying to harm themselves. So we found that the Centers offers an Uber ride after they get cleared directly to this location, and they can handle the whole circle of mental health. They do onsite, they have a behavioral health clinician, they do a pharmacy onsite, so it kind of helps us keep people out of getting chewed up in the ER and not getting too definitive care. And we've had, I think, huge success. I think I've sent four people there, and of the four, three have not called 911 since. It's super helpful, they handle it all in-house, they case manage, they have social work, psychiatry. Like I mentioned, the Chronic Care Clinic is here in the city, so for patients who are high-risk for COPD and congestive heart failure exacerbations, which is a huge number of people that get kind of bouncing back and forth between the ED, they manage it, same-day appointments, sometimes they do outpatient to manage these things so people are able to get the treatment and be back home, and not again, not getting chewed up in the ED for something that is best managed at home. And then with that, kind of a two-way referral program where I can send people to them, they can send them once they're discharged to me and say, it'd be super beneficial if you could visit Joe Smith down the street and make sure he's taking his meds, he's not gaining too much weight from water, et cetera. And lastly, here we have the Fairview readmission prevention team. I think this is so far going to be the most beneficial hospital partnership. I kind of have direct access to the social worker who's a nurse, who is in charge of making sure people are not readmitted for the same conditions within 30 days of discharge. And it's been super helpful to get information back and forth from the hospital systems, which is usually kind of lock and key, again treating people at home and preventing them from going to the ED and getting chewed up. In the field so far, we've had about six hoarding house cleanouts I've been part of. What it looks like on my end is keeping people in touch with their in-home, their food, in-home healthcare, PT, OT, all those kinds of things that they don't have access to as soon as they have dangerous hoarding conditions. And I think without having kind of a liaison between the fire department and these other resources, they get lost in the mix because no one is referring them, they can say no to CPR, APS. I've been monitoring medication use with the high-risk users and falls in the community, and you find that people have three or four prescriptions for the same med from three or four different doctors, different hospital systems. Again, it's kind of this point where they call 911 and they want to go somewhere different a lot, and I've been able to consolidate to single doctors, single hospital systems, eliminate redundant meds, because if they're taking three different doses of the same medication, they're a higher fall risk, they're not actually treating anything, they're probably creating new issues. Again, that's with connecting with the social work has been super helpful at Fairview specifically because I think a lot of our residents end up going there if they call 911. So being in touch with the ED and the doctors is, I think, a unique opportunity for us to make sure the care plan stays at home. And so we're having a lot of success with, I'll do a few home visits a week for maybe a month, and their medicine makes more sense, they're on a dosing routine, I leave them documents so they can write down the name of the med, the dose, what it's used for, which I think it gets lost when people get discharged. They've got a big packet of paper that says a bunch of stuff, and they don't know what it means in layman's terms, so I think I've been again having good success with kind of making it more accessible at home. Human Services has been a huge partner, again, people who have these hoarding conditions or mobility problems, Human Services is huge to get transportation to and from appointments, which seems is huge limitation. Food delivery has been really important, a lot of food despair in the city. And then patient referrals by EMS, again, sometimes they have no medication, redundant meds, expired meds, and the social support's been a big connection point for me between EMS and the community here. Pain points, I mean if anyone's tried to message their own doctor and get an appointment, you could wait a week, days, months, never hear back. Some of the smaller clinics, you're talking to a desk that may not actually have the capacity to leave messages or take messages or referrals. I've been able to get in touch with the doctors directly, discuss specific patients, get appointments, follow-up, let them know how the home life actually looks so they're not just hearing the one side, the pretty picture the patient will paint. The, there's a bottleneck of information access has been a problem between the hospital systems and myself. Again, talking to a doctor has been an issue, but I think with the new connections we're making, it's been really helpful. It's more strategic to talk to one person than 15 doctors, and the social work team is, they can consolidate all my information and get it out to all the doctors, it's been great. Same thing, yeah. Social work's been the crucial, the point here, and in the city, I think the social workers are, they're the change makers for sure, they connect people with all kinds of stuff I haven't even heard of yet.
Councilwoman, may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you. I just had a question about, this is great so far, do the patients have to sign off for you to be able to talk with their doctors, and like how does that all work?
So I think the smaller clinics have done a verbal, I'll have like, I'll call the clinic regarding the patient, we don't exchange any information, and then they will call the patient direct and say, do we have consent to discuss your case? And then we'll kind of do the actual back and forth. The hospital systems will do a consent before we have any interaction, and the emails come through like the Cleveland Clinic, like proprietary encrypted, so I have to like log in, make a password to even see the email, and they delete themselves after like 48 hours. So yeah, typically it'll be a verbal or done at the hospital before discharge.
Thank you.
In the future, again, this slide is kind of more housekeeping on my end, ideally, it would be a patient who is a high utilizer for 911 or a chronic condition that's poorly managed at home, upon discharge, the doctor would say, I think we have a good program for you in the city of Lakewood, community paramedic, and would you be keen on two visits a week for the next 30 days to make sure that you understand your medications, you're taking your doses, and we're not at risk with our lifestyle habits of having an exacerbation? And again, it's been super helpful with all these touchpoints with people that the discharge is confusing even probably for us. You get a packet of paper, a brief overview, but I'm able to sit down and kind of shoot through it a little more thoroughly with people and make structured notes and label things and help them dose better. So again, I think the future looks a little more direct handoff from the hospital systems and not solely relying on EMS crews and then kind of building, reverse engineering the process from the little notes we get in an EMS call. So I think we have the pieces in place to make this happen, it's currently, it's pretty much on autopilot, fall prevention and all that, it's been awesome.
Very good, thank you. Yes, this is fantastic. I do have just a couple of questions and a couple of comments. I feel like, I'm sorry. Am I not close enough? There it is, okay. Sorry about that. I do have a couple of questions and a couple of comments for you, and then I want to open it up to the rest of our committee and the rest of the council that's here. Thank you for doing this work, I think that this is fantastic and definitely fills a gap of care in Lakewood. The Neighborhood Paramedic Program, working with Fairview Hospital and the social worker program there is really, I think, cutting-edge, and I wonder if this type of program could be expanded, and how many people outside, how many people you're working with in the community, so if, I don't even know what that number might be, if it's 100, if you think that there's also, there's 200 people that aren't being served, would we need to start looking at expanding this program? And it comes to mind because every time I talk about the police department and, you know, carrot versus stick, right, with the police department, should we be treating these people differently as opposed to imprisoning them because they're breaking a law if they have some mental health issues or whatnot? But I'm wondering if you see in the future the numbers increasing and if you feel like your numbers will have to increase from just you alone?
I think so, yeah. And with every new kind of partnership we get, we kind of turn over a new rock, and there's a whole new cross-section of people that we didn't even know we could help. I think even with the mental health part and having access to the social work, I never thought I'd have as many referrals coming in as I do. But there's always room for growth for sure, and there's, I mean, we could specialize to have certain people doing certain populations even at this point. It's, there's no shores of clientele, and as densely populated as the city is, and it's growing, that yeah, there's just going to be more people with more needs on the horizon.
Do you have an idea of how many people you've worked with this year?
Uh, no.
Or even a ballpark? Was it 1,000, was it 50, was, you know?
I think my, in the last 90 days, I think I probably did 80, I guess, contacts, which can be multiple for people, so I've maybe 50 people in the last three months.
Okay. Yeah, maybe we could have a look at those numbers, and not, nothing that we need to see today or even within the month, but maybe by the end of the year, Chief, if we could have a look at, you know, what kind of numbers are we looking at here? That might be helpful for us too when we get into like budgeting items for departments and the need to have additional folks there. Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Baker?
Yes, thank you, Chief, and Oliver, or Mr. Harper. So I, what's really great about seeing the progression of this program first with Ryan Berth and then with you is that it seemed like it was kind of fall prevention, right? How do we get into homes, make sure they have assured clear paths, they're safe? And now what we're doing, which is great, it sounds like we've really kind of, that's almost running on its own, working with Lakewood Alive, we've got a good system in place. What's really interesting, my dad's a veteran and he goes to the VA, loves the VA, I think the reason he loves it is because he has a care coordinator. Like there's a person that regular private insurance doesn't typically pay for, that literally like calls him and like helps him navigate, oh, this doctor, you can get in this time, and this is, don't forget to go to pick up this, or whatever. It's almost like the services you're providing are similar to that.
It is, yeah.
Which is tremendous because it does, if you think about it from a city investment, it reduces, EMS is expensive, right, to bring out the truck and put the person in there and staff and bring them to Fairview or bring them downtown or wherever we're going to take them. So whatever we can do to kind of, it's an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. So I'm wondering as we, as we discover, and it's similar to Councilperson Strebig's question, you know, is there capacity for more? I'm thinking some of the stuff you're doing is very tactile, but what kind of like back office admin support do you have? Do you need more, like kind of can you walk through, are you able to get to the people that are trying to be served now, or what's your kind of capacity?
Yeah, and it's like with anything, there's, the people who need the most help are really receptive, but they're hard to get to, I think. It's like we haven't found them yet, and they have this, because they don't have access to the things we're offering basically. They don't go to the doctor, they don't have transportation, they have no social networks, so until we get to them, we can't provide. So I mean, there's, again, there's, my bandwidth is, I have plenty, and I do a lot of office work, and it seems, it's funny how it works out that it kind of, my week marches out almost the same way, as random as it is, that Mondays typically, the morning's busy, the afternoons are open, and I have one or two new referrals that come in towards the end of my day. I do a lot of admin and planning, I meet with Lakewood Alive every Monday at noon to map out our fall prevention installs, and then by Friday, my, what I had on my calendar has already doubled from a few admin. And then by Friday, my, what I had on my calendar has already doubled from a few admin days that I've had access to. I'm able to juggle it all surprisingly well right now, but again, it's, it'll get to a boiling point at some point, but.
Yeah, and how do you, like, as far as, you mentioned, like, notes from EMS or whatever, and that's how you can kind of see, and you get doctor permission. I'm wondering if there's ways to make that more seamless than, like, the actual approach of you having to sign into a clinic thing? Like, I'm wondering if the law department can work on, like, some, I know HIPAA and data, you know, privacy is really important, and it should be, it's personal information. But I'm wondering if there's, like, some sort of agreement that the city could enter with the Fairview hospital system, that if someone, like, checks a box or something, then that communication can happen, rather than him having to do it 10, 15 minutes every time, every patient.
We've kind of talked with, about it with, I met with the executive team of Fairview, and they had a similar program, and, I said it was, a western suburb that did something similar, and they gave their representative access to Epic, so they can have access to all their patients' medical records. And they said that they would be willing to do that here, which would be huge. If I could do one sign-in for the day and have every patient that has ever encountered Cleveland Clinic or whoever, all their data available, I think that would be, probably check those boxes.
So the idea being that if EMS brought anyone from Lakewood to Fairview, you would have access to their medical records? Would do that? I mean, I...
If they're willing to give us access, yes. There is a business associate agreement under HIPAA that is acceptable, that we typically have other entities, like, say, the company that does our EMS billing, they're getting that personal healthcare information. So in order to protect, you know, our residents who information is being shared, the other agency signs that agreement, you know, basically agreeing to abide by HIPAA. So it is doable if they want to make that available. Give me a holler and we can work that out.
Yeah, I just, I'm trying to free you up. A little less admin, a little more you out there, I think would be good. But I, I just say to the fire department, to the administration, this program, I think it's, to Councilperson Strebig's point, it's about, you know, not just, like, something happens, react, it's get out there in the community and try to stop it from happening and stop the really costly things that cost our community a lot, because it's money, it's routes, it's gas, it's person power, so to the extent we can do that ounce of prevention and do we need two ounces? And that's all I'm asking, is that, you know, as we go into budget season, I'm sure your CBA talks about maybe who can be the neighborhood paramedic, and maybe there's only one or two, I don't, I have no idea. But if there is a way, I know certainly I would be supportive if there was need to see if there'd be another one, right? And so, but I'm sure there are lots of pushes and pulls with that that would need to be flushed out, but just expressing my support for it. So thank you so much for coming, thank you much for the presentation.
Any other comments from council members? Mr. Evans?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to thank you both, Chief and Mr. Harper, for this work. I mean, these are absolutely critical services. I'm proud that, as the city, we're offering them, and so thank you so much for this tremendous work you're doing. Do we have a sense of any of the numbers, like, as far as money saved for ambulance transports or anything like that? And you don't have to answer now, but it'd be, I'd be interested to see if there's a way to gauge that, or if you have any ideas, thoughts about that.
There's a gentleman who has done, he's one of, like, the flagship community paramedics, he's in Denver, and he, I think, when I had first started, I asked, like, is there a cost savings you can, like, write down? He said, "It'll never actually result," like, there's no actual savings of money for whatever. I have to email him again and see specifically what he says, and I'll forward it to you, but it was something similar, that there's no cost savings to the program, but it's, like, the people aspect was his, like, focus. Like, with, if you're, I think it was specifically for fall prevention, but he's like, if your grandmother fell six times last year and twice this year, he's like, the number is irrelevant because Grandma's safe and she's doing less falling.
Yeah, I'm supportive of the program regardless of cost savings, I was just interested to see if we had any, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'm not sure how to calculate, but we'll figure it out, I'll get to it.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, if the Browns can show some, you know, economic impact support thing that extrapolates all this data, you know, because it, to the extent it's not, like, necessarily city savings, it's like, that family savings, that there weren't three ER visits that year, there was only one, or whatever. So I think there's ways to quantify the data that's maybe not city budget bottom line, but like, community bottom line.
I think if we know the cost to move a medic unit to a home, that would be a good way to start, I think.
President Kepel?
Thank you. You talked about mental health aspects a lot, and did I hear correctly that you're saying that that seems to be on the rise, or you just had more this year than previous, than...
I've never, we look year over year. It seems like it does, it goes up. I don't know that it's been a huge jump, but I think we're looking at it more, so we notice it more now, and I think we're separating them out by severity more. So again, I think we're just in front of them more often because we're trying to get people to the definitive care, which is hard to do with the varying types of mental illnesses going on and then following up and following through. But I think it's not going down, that's for sure.
And how does that, is that, how do you get referrals with that? Does that happen, that you're called for something else and then the need is identified? Or is it coming through police with CIT, or is it a mixture, or...
Yeah, it's all the above. I don't, the hospitals don't refer mental health in the community to us. I think we are not mental health professionals, and I think it'd be a disservice to send them to us. They usually have social needs, so we'll get wrapped in for that. The residents that I've been able to help have been, like, hoarding houses, there's a mental health aspect, the high utilizers, I think if I can chase it down the rabbit hole far enough and, like, get the doctor, get the meds, get the food and transportation, and they're still using 911, I'm like, that's when my alarm bells go off, if there's a mental health issue, that there's something else not being met. But, yeah, typically, an EMS call with a mental health aspect will be my number one way that I can put in front of them.
And then you mentioned about the centers being, so is that, is that, how is that, if a resident is in need of help, is that, is the centers, is that provided at cost? Is that with their insurance, or how is...
Medicare, they accept.
Okay.
And I think it's the same as going to the ED, but it's...
But better?
It's just specifically for mental health.
Okay.
Same day in and out with follow-up care.
And then, are the other paramedics and, or, you know, firefighting team, do you all receive crisis intervention training like the police do in terms of mental, like, when you are going into mental health situations?
We don't do CIT specifically, no.
Okay. Thank you so much for your work, and this is a really great presentation, really great program. It's just like, whenever, and I see Director Berry out there, there's Human Services, too, we always say that, and I was glad to see that partnership as well, because sometimes it's, it is hard sometimes to quantify, like we were saying about the financial benefit to the city or the taxpayers, but we know that an ounce of prevention, you know, is a pound of cure, the same thing with, you know, violence prevention, you know, all those kinds of things. So everything we do to build community and safety for our residents helps, so.
Thank you. Very good. Any other comments? Thank you both for the presentation and for being here with us tonight. Our third order of business is to continue considering the recommendations from La Swab to ordinance updates for the shelter's trap, neuter, and return program. I'd like to, again, thank Councilmember Marx for bringing this communication forward, and of course, the volunteers from La Swab and CLAWS that do endless work, and the law department for helping us put this ordinance together. Two-thirds of the Public Safety Committee is represented this evening with Mr. Baker and myself. In addition to council, Mr. Evans is also here as President Kepel, as well as city representation from the mayor, the law director and assistant law director, and Mr. Crumley from Animal Control. In the audience as well, we have Nancy Binder, the chairperson for La Swab, and Megan Gleda, did I say that wrong? Gleda, I'm sorry, I was close. Megan Gleda with CLAWS that does a lot of the TNR in the city. I would first like to make a motion to amend the ordinance version in this agenda by submitting, by, excuse me, by substituting the updated version sent Friday, September 12th, by the law department to this committee and La Swab. Do I have a second? Motion's been made, and second is? All in approval?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? And that motion passes. Again, thank you to the law department for making updates and changes based on the last communication from Ms. Blatch Lasher and Ms. Christique from CLAWS. I'd like to review the proposed ordinance and recommend a few more changes to keep the responsibilities of running the TNR program with the Animal Control Department with assistance from community cat caregivers and not the other way around. With a few more edits and approval from La Swab, we can send this back to full council for approval. Anyone that would like to add any more opening comments before we get into this ordinance? So we had a change in that first sentence on the ordinance from release to return. I think that that has been corrected now. And going through, we see, sometimes it's a little hard to follow this, but that first section is repealed and replaced with this second section, which combined Sections A and B and added a definition for running at large. It seemed like everything else was the same in Section 2, other than Section 2D, I'm in 505.02, Section D, where cat was, or cat was also added. Next page, we have a repeal of Section 3 and replacement with Section 4, and then this impounding and disposition records added a few things, like the microchipping, reimbursement, adoption, and shelter here. And then I do have some changes to the idea on 50503, Section E, in that I would like it to say that any person who has found or trapped a dog or cat whose owner cannot be identified shall report such animal to Animal Control for impoundment. Upon receipt of the animal, Animal Control shall have the animal scanned for a microchip and attend to reunite the animal with its owner. Again, I think this idea that the volunteers should be doing that, I think that's misplaced. I think that that should be a city function there. And then the next, Section 5 has been repealed, replaced by Section 6, and we see a stricter misdemeanor, I think it was the third degree last time, and I think that that has now gone to a first degree. And then Section 7 has been repealed and replaced with Section 8. And I was, I was a little confused with the B under 50512, Section B, with if we wanted ore urinates in that section right off the top there, any animal which scratches, digs in, or urinates, or defecates upon any lawn, tree, shrub, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I didn't know if ore urinates should be back in that section or not, and I couldn't remember that conversation. Do you remember that?
The law department removed that. Typically, when you walk a dog, you anticipate that you're going to carry a bag with you to clean up after an animal that defecates, that really isn't possible with urination. So that was the reason that it was removed.
Okay.
I've had to collect a sample before I tell you it's not a pretty sight.
Okay, so we don't need that there. Thank you for that explanation. And then we also had updates in that section to include immediate pickup of poop, but not by the community cat caregivers, which I think was good. And then there was that one little section that had a double negative that was a little confusing to me. No owner or keeper of such dogs or other animals shall fail, and I think that double negatives are, tend to be confusing to society, I think, in general. So if we could change that to, the owner or keeper of such dogs or other animals deemed to be a nuisance by the courts as described in this subsection shall abate such nuisance by permanently removing such animals beyond the city limits within 10 days after service of such notice. And I'm, I will absolutely make sure that you all get this, this verbiage that I'm changing And then in the next section, Section 9, Trap, Neuter, and Return of Community Cats. We have a definition, Section A, that's definitions, and we have Section B that is permitted acts. And I would like to add a Section C, and again, I will get this, this verbiage to you, that the City of Lakewood shall incur the expense of all spay and neuter procedures, ear tipping procedures, cat food, and other associated supplies. Community cat caregivers who are registered with the Animal Control Supervisor and who pay for spay, neuter procedures, ear tipping procedures, cat food and associated supplies from their personal funds are eligible for reimbursement up to a set amount under the following conditions. Proof of the expense are provided, and a record of such is maintained by the Animal Control Supervisor. The cost of the expense is commensurate with the market rate for the procedure and/or material supplies. Volunteers may be reimbursed in partial amount if the Animal Control Supervisor determines that the volunteer was overcharged. So if they're, you know, paying $90 for a $40 bag of cat food, that would have to be corrected. And pursuant to administrative policies to be promulgated by the Animal Control Supervisor, so in accordance with any rules that you have to do there. So those are some of the changes that I saw in there, and I believe there was also another version sent later today. Sorry, I shut down my computer at 2:00 today, Ms. Wallow, and I didn't see, I haven't had a chance to look at any other corrections or changes that you have, but if you could walk us through that, that would be helpful.
Sure, I would be happy to. It's in Section 4 of the existing ordinance, and it was brought forward by ACO Crumley that he wanted to include if an animal was impounded and it's not registered, to require that owner to obtain the registration through the animal shelter and pay for that prior to release of the animal, and then also if it's not microchipped, to require microchipping and that the owner of the animal pay for that as well.
Very good. If you, yes, you have sent that over to us.
Correct.
Was that the only change that you had?
Correct.
Very good.
And in the version that I emailed out, it's highlighted in blue, so you'll be able to find the change quickly.
Perfect. So with, with your change and the changes that I have made, are there any other questions from, from the committee?
Thank you, and I tried to stay on top of all of your proposed changes. I'm a reader, more than a kind of verbal follower, so I'd like to see them in a version. You know, I understand the intent behind reimbursing folks, I, you know, just the nature of city budgets, budgets, we literally need to, like, set a cap on some expenses, so if part of our code allows reimbursement, but it doesn't set a cap on it, then there may be a problem with that, just from a budgeting perspective. And so I think there may, we, I would be interested in exploring that more to see that we can put some sort of reasonable limit on it. But other than that, that's something I think we need to talk about more, or at least I do as a member of this committee, when I think about more. The other changes you indicated, I think, are pretty fair, but I'd like to look at them.
Yeah, my intention is to make sure that everybody gets a look at this again. La Swab meets on Wednesday this week. La Swab meets on Wednesday this week, so I think it's a little bit short for a turnaround for them to have a look at this and make their, any final changes to this, but by the end of October, after their next October meeting, right, which would be the third Wednesday, whatever that date is, the third Wednesday of October, if we would come back together again after they have had a chance to look at this new verbiage that I'm going to install in here along with the recommendations from Assistant Director Swallow, then they will have had a month to look at this and make any final recommendations or let us know if we've, we've completely missed the ball on any of this information. Does the city have any comment on the changes that I have proposed?
I have a couple. Your change about the microchipping, your checking for the microchip, I don't know if that needs to be in the ordinance. Any animal that's brought into the shelter, we automatically check them for microchipping. It's a policy.
Okay.
That we do, so I don't know if that needs to actually be in the ordinance. And then any resident can bring any stray dog or cat that they find to us or to a veterinarian, usually for free, they microchip them as well, so I think it's very easy for the community of, to get that done. I don't necessarily believe it needs to be in the ordinance. The part about having the city be responsible for the TNR program, one, I don't have the staff to be able to do that; two, I don't know what the cost would end up being for the city, and I know that our current shelter and the new shelter, once we get into that, I wouldn't have the room or to be able to deal with having to do TNR. So I don't think that would really be feasible for the city to be taking that on.
Okay, any other concerns? From anyone? Of the city?
Thank you.
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Not necessarily a concern, but the Law Department would like to consider the implications of the funding by the city. It might give rise to other duties if we're paying for certain activities and performing them. It might implicate some other aspects of this ordinance that we didn't address because it was still being performed by third parties, not cities, so it might create risk that we haven't addressed elsewhere, so we really need to take a deeper look into it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, and please do. Any other comments, President Kepel?
Thanks, I just had a question. I'm kind of trying to read these different versions and put it together in my head, so but I had a question about the, the section added about the dogs being released unless as both valid registration and embedded microchip. And my question was going to be if that was just dogs or cats, because it said pets, but I see it says dogs. But, so then in the next section, it says if the cat is microchipped, because we don't require cats to be registered, correct? Is that correct? Okay. And then, but I did kind of wonder about if we could require them to be microchipped if they have been out wandering around, because I know if you follow any of the Lakewood community pages, there's a fair number of cats that are regular escape artists and/or indoor/outdoor cats, which is, you know, not technically allowed, but, so if they are falling into that category and regularly, I don't know how often that happens, maybe ACO Crumley can speak to that, but if there's, you know, you might just recognize them, you might be like, oh, that's Oreo, but if there's, you know, if that's happening a lot, I just wondered if the cat is someone's cat, if we can require them to be microchipped before they're released.
I would prefer that that's the case. Dogs, yes, they have to be registered with the county, so the county dog tag, that's through the county, that's what I am indicating there, and also to have a microchip. And I would like that for the cats as well. And it, it helps with a couple of things. Obviously, it helps with reuniting the animal with its owner in the future if it's lost again, but it also would help us in, because the APL and Cleveland City Dogs basically have this policy, it has helped us to catch owners who intentionally abandoned their animals because they were microchipped and registered. So that's also an objective, because unfortunately, we've been having a lot of animals purposely being abandoned this past year, so I think it would be good to have in our ordinance in case that's a situation that's occurring here in the city.
Thank you. Any, anything else you want to add in there, Ms. Swallow, if you could maybe work with Mr. Crumley on anything else that, that we've missed there? And then, did you have more comments? Anyone else have any other comments or questions? So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to send these recommendations, update this language with the changes that I'm recommending and the changes that you're going to recommend, and send these recommendations to La Swab for comment and request another public safety meeting in late October after the October La Swab meeting to review their suggestions.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion passes. Any other questions from the administration, from the city, or the public? Any comments regarding this ordinance? Hearing none, this committee is adjourned.
Community of the whole will start at 7:00, as noticed.
All right, we'll, uh, give you one minute. Uh, but we're missing our star witness here. All right, we'll call committee of the whole to order. Do we have the minutes from? Okay, all right, so. I guess I'll, do we need to move to defer that, or we can just skip it? Okay, all right, um, yeah, I'm used to the full council. All right, so, uh, our main thing we're here to talk about tonight is, uh, resolution twenty twenty five dash forty four, uh, regarding opioid, uh, litigation settlement. Director Vargo, uh, do you want to tee us up a little bit here about, uh, what we're talking about?
Sure, thank you, Madam President. The, um, resolution before you is, uh, to authorize the administration to, um, basically accept funds from additional defendants in the national class action, national class actions, uh, regarding the opioid crisis. The settlements were negotiated at the national level with the respective state attorneys general, and it's just a matter for the city to sign up. Uh, and we've already signed up for pre-existing settlements. At, um, at the full council meeting last time, when this was, uh, sent to committee, there were questions about how much funds we've taken in and the use of those funds. And, uh, um, Director Mahoney is here with respect to the funds, but I can say in general, um, since inception of all of this litigation, the city has received about a hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars, and the city has spent approximately forty thousand of that. All with respect to a particular consultant that, uh, Director Barry is here to, uh, discuss with you. And, uh, we can, um, uh, answer any other questions about the use of the funds to this date. There is no urgency on the use of the funds. We're allowed to bank them and let them grow and decide at a later time how to use them, but they are very restricted. They have to be used for, um, to either remedy opioid, uh, abuse, or prevent it, or assist law enforcement in addressing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, could you repeat that number again about how much we've taken in?
Approximately, uh, one hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars since twenty twenty two.
Thank you. All right, and then, um, Director Barry, did you want to talk a little bit about, uh, the program that we've been using those funds for?
Sure, uh, thank you. So, since, um, the beginning of twenty twenty three, I believe, we have been engaged with Jim Joyner, who's come to council before and had, um, a presentation about the Me We Program. So it's a family education and support program that is, uh, a ten-week, uh, rotating curriculum that's been created, and it's to support families and friends affected by a loved one substance use order, disorder. The, the cost to the city is about three hundred dollars per session, but the cost to any participants is completely free. And we do offer, uh, this simultaneously in person and virtually. The attendance has done nothing really but grow since twenty twenty three. On average, there's about, uh, sixty different folks that attend on a monthly basis, probably about fourteen or so, um, per session, about half virtual, and then the, the rest in, in person. And again, this is to address, uh, what families and, and the friends of the addicted are, um, you know, experiencing, and how they can help, um, themselves and also support the individual. I would say, uh, the majority, maybe ninety-nine percent of the folks that are in these meetings are, um, families affected by opioid use, so we're definitely using the funds as they are intended. Jim had a, uh, impact study done, uh, by a respected consultant back in twenty twenty two about the program, and he received over four thousand different participant surveys that were reviewed, and it came back to ninety-nine percent, um, positive feedback on, on the program and its success. And we have some, uh, staff members that I'm sure wouldn't mind, um, you know, commenting that they have participated in the program for one of their loved ones, and, and they have, um, they found it very, very helpful, so. Um, I, I think it's a great program. Jim is a very, uh, well-known and respected chemical dependency counselor in Cuyahoga County, um, and it sits on many different task forces, um, but, um, that's, that's pretty much the program.
Thank you, I remember him coming and talking through it, and it sounds like a great program. Director Vargo, we, can you go back? You said the funds would restrict, are restricted to treatment, prevention, law enforcement. Was there another category?
I didn't, um, mean to put a limit on it as it relates to the opioid crisis. Uh, very restricted to opioid issues and the crisis, but within that fairly broad, and I can say that because we've done recent research on how we can best use the funds efficiently to bring the most, um, value to, to the city. And we're still analyzing that and working with the administration departments to see how to do that going forward. So, we believe we have broad discretion as long as we are touching the opioid problem, whether it's prevention, whether it's, um, helping with the addiction, whether it's the neighborhood paramedics treating, visiting, items like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, um, Director Mahoney, um, do, or, or whoever knows the answer to this, but, um, so the, the agreements we've already entered into, will we still be receiving funds from those agreements? Or we've received all of the funds we're going to from those agreements?
No, it's, it's just more, these are more funds, yes. We'll continue to receive the ones that council originally approved a couple of years ago, and these are just more companies going on. I, I believe, um, i- it's going to continue for some time, at least another eighteen years perhaps for receiving all these funds, yeah.
Okay, so we receive an annual sum from the previous ones? I don't recall, is that okay?
Yes, yeah, so this is just more companies, um, that are included now in the settlement.
Thank you. Uh, colleagues? Yep, Vice President Baker.
Thank you, um, and I'm, I'm curious, at least high level, so it sounds like we spent forty thousand roughly. We have about a hundred fifty eight thousand, leaves about a hundred ten, a hundred twenty thousand plus more money coming in. What are some of the discussions the administration has been having about, within the, the kind of confines of how that money can be used, on where we see it being used?
Uh, thank you, Councilman, uh, through the chair, um, really no more than what I've just discussed. It's, it's in the formative stages, uh, the research is relatively recent as these funds have grown. Uh, we did the legal research to see the parameters to be spent. We think we have more flexibility than, um, using third-party service providers. So we're studying the use of it internally, and, um, obviously the paramedics group would be a, a focal point of that.
And ju- just so I'm clear, is this, um, cause just from a budgeting standpoint, is this like, you think you can, like, charge positions to it, or, or more so like, uh, third-party costs that the paramedics incur?
Um, we believe at this, at this stage, Councilman, uh, we believe we can even use it for, um, not just third-party costs by city officials and, and city employees, but actual, uh, payment of the city, uh, employees, um, themselves. Actually use it, uh, for, for example, the, the paramedics, neighborhood paramedics. Now, and I don't mean to exclude Mr. Joyner, I believe that that program is, is so well-received that that would always be continued, but, uh, we're saying we're having additional funds.
No, I, so, so what I'm, what I think I'm hearing is that potentially a, a quarter of the salary of a neighborhood paramedic could be covered by this, as long as you can show that those services relate to opioid, or something like that.
That is correct.
Thank you, and that's excellent, so.
Thank you, other council colleagues? Councilwoman Hamilton Steiner?
Um, so would a potential y- use of the funds be narc, purchase, purchasing of Narcan?
Uh, yes, councilperson, that is true, and, uh, we've discussed that, but fortunately, so far at least, uh, our purchase has been taken care of by other grants.
Okay, thank you.
There are questions? Uh, Councilman Butt?
Thanks, Madam, uh, Chair. Thanks, Director Vargo, Mayor, um, Director Mahoney, um, and folks on, on, uh, the using end of the, that's probably the wrong term, the financial usage side of the, uh, table here. Um, yeah, service provision. So, uh, my, my que- first of all, thank you, Madam Chair, for convening this so we can review. It sounds as if the, uh, pending, uh, resol- pending legislation is sensible for us to, uh, consider approving, uh, you know, later in the meeting, given the legal realities and all that. I'm glad to hear that, um, the accountability for the companies that really did a misdeed is continuing through this legal process, and that we may get some proceeds. It sounds as if we've got a hundred ten thousand dollars or thereabouts in reserve. Um, that surprises me a little, cause years ago, uh, Councilwoman Marks isn't here, but I, I recall kind of the acute crisis, uh, that we were in in the early years. I thought we were using these funds for Narcan and for other frontline equipment. Perhaps that also came from other sources, like, you know, law enforcement grants or, or something else. So, to accompany what Councilman Baker said, you know, th- this is a strategic opportunity. Are we, uh, a- a- and, and what I don't have a sense of is to get our hands around the scope and scale of the problem currently. And a while ago, we had, you know, data on number of instances, number of, you know, emergency responses, number of overdoses. There were cases where we were, um, helping somebody in overdose, and they would wake up and be angry at the emergency responders, things of that nature. And, and we also had, um, a peer-to-peer counseling program that would go directly into the emergency room at, um, the, the Family Health Center in Lakewood. So, a, a lot of good things. I don't know where those stand today, are those played out? Are we continuing those? And do we have some sense of whether the crisis is stable, diminished, or spiking from time to time? Because to me, that incidence out in the community would be what would drive our use of our hundred ten thousand dollar reserve that may grow if, um, the legal proceedings go well.
So just a quick, um, quick look back through the last year. There were twenty incidences where we responded for an overdose. Anecdotally, I, I, I could try to get back to a certain point, but I want to say the crisis was around twenty seventeen-ish, where it was pretty bad in Lakewood. Just anecdotally, I would say that number would have been closer to a hundred. So, we can see that, that it's on the decline. And in that same time period is when the fire department entered into an agreement with the police department and Project Sore, which is a peer-to-peer, um, it's like a support network where someone overdoses, and then, uh, fire department employee, a police department employee, and a volunteer from Project Sore would reach out to that person, they would go to their door, and they would try to get them into a treatment program. That's kind of where we've been looking, because, um, just with internal discussions, we've talked about training and, um, resupplying Narcan. A lot of those are provided to us, um, whether free of charge or through other, um, revenue streams. So, tho- those really, um, aren't a concern of ours right now. I think where, um, Project Sore could really benefit is, um, with Oliver and his program, and really expanding upon that and trying to see if they can, uh, really just make a better connection with the folks that are experiencing this addiction and getting them to definitive care, which is always Oliver's mission, is get those patients to definitive care. I think Oliver does have some notes, just some, uh, maybe, what do you think, i- ideas really of, of where this could be utilized by maintaining that relationship with Project Sore?
Uh, I, I did send an email to Human Services, actually, May, as of May second. It looked from what we had access to, looked that we had about eighty overdoses. Um, it doesn't, not specified by substance, but responding to eighty overdoses in, in less than a calendar year effectively. And some, again, just brief whiteboard ideas we had when we met with Project Sore. Originally, when the funds had been discussed, was kind of ideas to bridge the gap for access for people that are in the community. I think we had some, not to say cuter ideas, but the ideas that are a little more fluffy, were kind of using the money to have almost like scholarships for people going to sober living or treatment, um, and then tracking them in like a cohort to see who finished treatment, and having, uh, like a, a small bundle of, like a Uber gift card or gift card for a Walmart, for food, clothing, things to get to bridge the gap post-treatment when they're kind of re-entering civilian life, so to speak. So a lot of our ideas were, were more like this, the social gap after treatment, cause I think they, they do a good job of getting people to care, and I think the falloff is the important part for us to encapsulate, to make sure they don't kind of turn recidivists and see the same people doing the same things. That's, a lot of our discussions end up that way. I don't know what it looks like, but.
Sure.
The, um, that, first of all, that's fantastic. I'm really glad to hear the expansive thinking or the strategic thinking, and I, I would love it if Lakewood continues to be an innovator and drills down on what could be more effective. Sounds like we're having significant success, and, and we have the opportunity with this financial capacity to potentially even go further. Does this, do these funds and do the overdoses you're talking about, and the treatment you're talking about, include fentanyl or not? And, and the opioids, um, just, I could use a refresher in my memory as to what is included and not included. and not included?
Use of these funds, Councilman, are limited to the opioid crisis, not fentanyl. Now, the professionals might know that those two melt together. As a lawyer, trying to look for bright lines, it's most comfort that we'll get to just limit it to opioid. But if, if there's a combination, if one affects the other, then we can, we could probably get assurance from our research that we could use the funds in that regard. But to the extent that Mr. Harper's talking about addressing opioid overdoses and these creative programs that he's talking about, that, that would be the paradigm of some of these other uses that we think we could use these funds for.
Thank you. I had a, so Project Sore, we, we are still doing that partnership. Is that correct? Okay. How does that, walk me through how that happens, like, so?
Currently, if, I have kind of a widget set up on my dashboard so that every overdose, regardless of substance, and then alcohol abuse run will kind of populate on my dashboard. And I can go into the run and see if it was like a weekend of just someone was drinking too much and fell, or for a routine drinking problem, et cetera. Same for like opioid use. And then I'll contact Project Sore representatives and say, hey, I got this person who might be a good candidate. And we'll add them to our list. And typically, every other Thursday, we'll go out for an hour or two and knock on the door of anybody who's had a drug or alcohol event and try to kind of give them information and see if they're willing to go to treatment on the spot. Currently, that's the most. And they said they're kind of at, they're maxed out on how much they can offer to us, financial constraints and manning. So I, in our heads, the best use of those funds on our end would be to bolster the people who are getting the definitive care. Like Chief said, we, we have access through the doctors that I work under, our UH doctors, and they are in charge of a nasal Narcan countywide process. So I have a box of them in my car. And all I have, they said every time I give one to a person to keep at home, I just put their name and info on a registry, they send me another one. So it's kind of a one-for-one. Training we get through the fire department already. And I, I don't know if it would be appropriate for us to have more training other than what the emergency medics currently do. I think it would be overkill to have them working on the backend information when they're only really responsible for breathe again, get them to an ED effectively. We've had talks like that, and I think it would be best used for the people who are most experienced in getting care on the backend for people.
So the Project Sore, so if, if, if a resident, you knock on their door and they say, yes, I want to go to treatment right now, and, and they don't have insurance or they don't have whatever, is the Project Sore, do they, how is that paid for? Is that?
I, I mean, you might speak to it more, right?
Yeah. So Project Sore, they have an agreement with the Adams Board where there's some beds set aside at different detox and treatment facilities. So that's actually how the partnership works. And it's actually an incredibly innovative partnership. This is something that no other community really has great access to. And they've actually expanded their relationship with all of the neighborhood hospitals. So it's not just the Lakewood ED any longer. It's pretty much every Cleveland Clinic facility on this side of town, also other locations. So they're getting referrals from us, they're getting referrals from the EDs directly, and they're able to put people in beds if someone indicates they're ready for treatment. And it, it happens almost instantaneously. And it's the, one of the greatest things I have ever seen, especially coming from the emergency department, working as one of these social workers and not having any options. So I agree with Oliver. I think it's a great program that we should definitely look at utilizing some of these funds for. But they're, they're able to navigate any of those ins and outs and barriers that might exist, whether it's insurance or otherwise. And they're a great team with the Woodrow Project and Aaron Helms of the Helm.
Thank you. And then, any other questions from council colleagues?
Director Vargo, I just had another question regarding the resolution itself. So the language indicates, you know, there's no room for individual negotiations and class action lawsuit. So Lakewood agrees to participate in all class actions unless otherwise recommended by outside counsel and is agreed to the law director. So passage of this resolution would be for this current batch of new before us, as well as anything in the future that comes?
That's correct, Madam Chair. For example, this, this latest round, which we need to sign up by October 5th, is with, I don't want to call these companies obscure, but they're called secondary manufacturers. And they go by some names, and these might be familiar to you, but they weren't to me. Alvegin, Amneal, Apatex, Hikma, Indevior, Sun, Zytus. So the plaintiffs' bar and the state's AGs are doing a great job bringing entities that touch the opioid production and distribution and getting funds from them. And so this would allow us to sign up as they come through. But again, on use of the funds, we, we could always have a committee on use of the funds, because that is not time-sensitive, like signing up for the settlements are.
Great. Yeah, I just, and then just in terms of language, because the, whereas clause before specifically mentions opioid, and then that clause just says all class actions, so just clarifying, this is specifically for opioid class actions and would not authorize any other class actions, such as a class action against, I'll just throw out First Energy, for instance, right?
Madam Chair, that's, that's absolutely correct. If that language is ambiguous, we apologize. It is limited to the opioid class action settlements agreed to by the state AGs.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from council members? No? All right. And then I will move to refer the resolution, the resolution favorably, back to full council for adoption. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. All right. There's no further business to come before Committee of the Whole without objection. We're adjourned. All right. We'll call council to order for the September 15th meeting. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Legion.
The Pledge of Legion to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where its stand is holy mission.
Now pause for a moment of silence. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Vice President Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Bolak?
Here.
Councilmember Evans?
Here.
President Keppel?
Here.
Councilmember Marks, absent. Councilmember Steiner?
Here.
Councilmember Strebig?
Here.
Move to excuse the absence of Councilwoman Marks?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Reading and disposal of the minutes of the regular meeting of council held September 2nd, 2025.
Move to approve without the necessity of a reading?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item one, report from Housing Planning and Development Committee, held September 8th, 2025. Vice President Baker?
Thank you. Dear colleagues, the Housing Planning and Development Committee met on September 8th to address two topics. The first was the follow-up discussion on Ordinance 182025 regarding front yard plantings. This ordinance was introduced in May by the Building Department as a way both explicitly permit front yard plantings and to establish certain regulations around them. Since this ordinance was introduced, committee members have received a great deal of thoughtful feedback from gardeners and residents, who have expressed concern with the original ordinance's restrictions on plant height and the size of the proposed buffer zone around the perimeter of each property. As Chair, I attempted to incorporate this feedback into a revised ordinance that the committee discussed at the meeting. The committee reached, or received additional feedback at the meeting, including input from Keep Lakewood Beautiful. An Ordinance 182025 will stay in committee while our, while we continue to work towards a final version that balances the interests of our gardeners with the public safety concerns of the Building Department. Next, Planning Department provided the committee with a summary of a transit feasibility study the city undertook in 2024 with the support of iTERRIS. The objective of the study was to evaluate different models for Lakewood-specific public transportation network, similar to the popular Lakewood Circulator that operated from 1998 to 2009. Six different models with a variety of characteristics were explored. iTERRIS evaluated on-demand versus fixed ops, city-operated versus contractor-operated, as well as hybrid options. The ultimate conclusion was that none of the models could be profitable, though the study was also able to suss out which models were closer to being profitable than others. Council members shared a variety of takeaways. Some members advocated for further study and some advocated for caution, and others advocated for prioritizing the transportation network regardless of cost. Discussion on the topic will likely continue as part of the budget planning meetings for the 2026 budget. At the meeting, the committee requested the administration post the study on the city website as well. Motion to receive and file the communication.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to receive and file. Any further comment? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item two, report from Committee of the Whole, held September 12th and September 15th.
Dear colleagues, on September 12th, Committee of the Whole met to discuss priorities for 2026 and the remainder of 2025, as well as various administrative matters, such as communication preferences, work styles, and data management. Council members took a preliminary look at applications for board and commission vacancies that had been received for planning commission, tree education advisory board, and case advisory board. It is expected that a formal review and selection will happen in the next few weeks at a future Committee of the Whole. Council members also reviewed and updated budget priorities identified at previous council retreats in anticipation of the 2026 budget process. Earlier this evening, Committee of the Whole met to review Resolution 202544, a resolution authorizing the mayor or designee to enter into agreements with other communities in the state of Ohio in the settlement of class action claims related to opioids against various companies. This would be additional funds from additional defendants, negotiated at the national level with the respective attorneys general. The city has taken in one hundred fifty-eight thousand since 2022 in opioid settlement funds and has spent about forty thousand dollars. There's not a requirement on the timeline of the use of the funds, but they are restricted to opioid-related issues, such as treatment, prevention, support, and law enforcement. This resolution will add more companies contributing to what we will continue to receive annually from the previous settlements. In Committee of the Whole, we discussed the, one of the current programs through Jim Joyner, the Me We Family Education Support Program, to the ten-week rotating curriculum in support of families touched by addiction. Costs the city about three hundred dollars per session, but is free to participants. Attendance has continued to grow and has a ninety-nine percent positive feedback on the program. Council members asked questions regarding potential usage of the funds and the ongoing needs of the community, community related to opioid epidemic. Since May 2nd, emergency services reported that they responded to eighty overdoses. Potential ideas include scholarship for treatment, plan, and support, including continued partnership with the Project Sore program. And the resolution was referred favorably out of committee for adoption this evening. Move to receive and file that report.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item three, Resolution 202544, a resolution to take effect immediately, authorizing the mayor or her designee to enter into agreements to participate with other authorizing the mayor or designee to enter into agreements to participate with other communities in the state of Ohio in the settlement of opioid claims against various companies.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and I see we have an e-comment on this one. Yeah, urging us on certain usage of the funds, which was a lot of what we were discussing. And we continue to have those conversations. This resolution ultimately authorized us to get the funds. All right, any further discussion? Have anyone signed in to speak on this? Doesn't look good on this one. Okay, so no further discussion? Then on the motion to adopt, Resolution twenty twenty-five forty-four, all those in favor.
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item four, report from Public Safety Committee, held today, September fifteenth, 2025.
Councilwoman Strebig.
Thank you. The Public Safety Committee met tonight and had a presentation by firefighter and paramedic Oliver Harper on the Neighborhood Paramedic Program and annual report on the successes with collaborating agencies and the social work departments of various hospitals, and also the pain points of the inability to access people in certain situations. We also had another conversation about reviewing the TNR program. I recommended a few more changes to keep the responsibilities of running this program with the Animal Control Department, with assistance from the community cat givers, and not the other way around. Next steps for that program are to send new language from my recommendations and also from the Law Department and the Animal Control Officer to La Swab for a review at their next meeting and probably their next two meetings, and by the end of October to reconvene to finalize that program and bring it back here to council.
I'll move to receive and file that report.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item five, Ordinance twenty, twenty twenty-five, an ordinance to take effect immediately, updating various sections of Chapter five oh five, animals and fowl of the codified ordinances, and creating regulations for trap, neuter, spay, and release of community cats within the city of Lakewood.
Move to defer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item six, Ordinance twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, an ordinance to take effect immediately, authorizing the city of Lakewood to transfer title to certain real property located within the city and enter into a purchase and sale agreement with Bell Avenue Partners for the purpose of supporting the redevelopment of certain real property in the city of Lakewood.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Vice President Baker.
Yes, as these have come up, in consultation with the Law Department, as I work for a property tax-funded organization in my day job, out of an abundance of caution, I will recuse from these votes. Thank you.
Thank you.
So this ordinance is related to the transfer of the title of the downtown development to Bell Avenue Partners for redevelopment under the terms of the development agreement. Any discussion from council members? Comments from the administration?
Councilman Bullock.
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. Just, you know, this is the first of a series of ordinances, legislation that culminates many years of work after the painful loss of Lakewood Hospital and then efforts to redevelop the site, which there was a plan for a while, and then COVID hit, and the developer that we had originally wasn't able to continue. And so we've come upon a new development plan with a partner named Casto, who's proven to be a good, thoughtful partner, who's committed a lot of their own resources, has been a good partner to the building trades and people who earn prevailing wage, and have also committed to many, many other quality controls that the city has required and put out there. We were in a position to do that because the city owns the land, unless and until this proposed piece of legislation passes. So we've talked about what's before us over the last several years. Really, the City Council and the administration committed to this plan back in December around Christmas time. And what is before us tonight, as I understand, I'm happy to stand corrected by the Law Director if needed, but is essentially the execution of what we committed to nine months ago. What did we use the last nine months for? Due diligence, to go through the details, to actually perform some of the preliminary work. Some of that's legal work, some of that's financial work, some of it might be plans. A lot of it would be detail, I believe, in a development agreement. And so all of that important detail has now been proposed and is ready to be approved. So that's what's before us with this and the next two pieces of legislation. I think it's a big deal. I think it's a good thing for our community. It's, I see some of my good neighbors and friends from the Lakewood Hospital show over many years. It's not that anybody enjoyed losing the hospital, but the idea is to do something good for the community in that central site of many acres. It's a once-in-a-generation opportunity. And with this development, we'll have two hundred and ninety-eight residential units, a plaza in the middle of the site that is publicly accessible, maintained by the private owner, twenty-five thousand square feet of retail. In some ways, that's great because it's not too much, and that means all those new residents can walk and shop and patronize other existing businesses. Everybody there is a dense, densely populated resident. You can take the bus, you can walk. So there's a lot of great principles involved here. There are some affordable housing units involved, and I think that's a good approach as well because you don't have affordable housing somewhere else. It's right in the middle in a new facility, along with a lot of other neighbors and residents. So there's a lot to like. I expect we're going to have some commentary tonight about it because there's plenty of good neighbors who have different views on this. But I just didn't want to let the vote come without some discussion of all this work by this administration, previous administration, this council. I know that the council leadership put in a lot of spade work yourselves with the Planning Department to get to this point. So, you know, I support it. I look forward to voting for the proposed legislation.
Thank you. Yes, this has been a long time coming. I know we're all looking forward to seeing shovels in the ground and this project move forward, as is our community has been anxiously awaiting, filling a big hole in the middle of our city and our hearts. So we are looking forward to that, to have the addition of almost three hundred housing units, twenty percent of affordable, the public space in the front, the green space, the pocket park, the public restrooms, the retail space, the preservation of the Curtis Block Building, which we heard a lot from the historic preservation community, and bringing back some of all that density as well to downtown. And the public parking as well, yes, thank you. Also, public parking.
All right, so any further comments, discussion? I do have one person signed up to speak on downtown development. I'm not sure, I'm assuming, Mr. Zachem, you'd prefer to speak on the tax component of this, or would you rather go now? Okay, come on up, Mr. Zachem. And you know the drill, you push the button, you have up to five minutes, and address the chair.
So it's my understanding that Lakewood has an ordinance on the books, making it clear that this government has a fiduciary responsibility to its citizens. So tonight, when you vote yes, you will be violating this ordinance. The affordable housing mentioned, well, I'm all for affordable housing. I think I've made that very clear. But spending six hundred and fifty-one thousand per apartment for affordable housing, just for fifteen years, when a single-family house can be bought for three hundred and fifty, makes absolutely no fiscal sense to give a developer a five million dollar loan below market with a below-market interest rate, where at a rate that not even banks can borrow at. I have no idea how that fits within fiduciary responsibility. And this is a developer that makes it very clear on their website that they have an excellent ability to obtain loans through the capital markets. I have no idea how giving away twenty-seven million dollars of school property taxes fits within that. For those who think that this will benefit taxpayers by adding more apartments, the number added is way too small to make a difference in terms of rents. In fact, as a landlord, I expect that rents will rise once landlords see how much the developer is charging. For those of you that point out that it's been over ten years for the pit to actually make money, while it's true, that is absolutely no excuse to give away the dollar amounts involved. I've never opposed a developer. I believe in building. I make my living doing similarly, but I do oppose giving away the kitchen sink. It's time to put citizens first and respect your own laws and put developers last. Thank you.
Thank you. So this ordinance that's before us is the one regarding the purchase agreement. The next ordinance will be regarding the tax incentives. So on Ordinance twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor.
Aye.
And that.
I abstain.
Oh, sorry.
Item seven, Ordinance twenty-five, twenty twenty-five, an ordinance to take effect immediately, declaring improvement to real property within the city of Lakewood to be a public purpose, exempting such improvement from real property taxation, requiring the owners of the property to make service payments in lieu of real property taxes, establishing an urban redevelopment tax increment equivalent fund for the deposit of service payments, making related authorizations pursuant to Ohio Revised Code sections, and authorizing a service payment agreement in connection with the same.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. And I'll just add, so this is the tax portion of this project. And when we talk about tax increment financing, it can be a little confusing, but part of, important to remember with this property that because this was a hospital that was considered nonprofit, we can argue whether Cleveland Clinic is actually nonprofit, but they were as regulated as a nonprofit and therefore did not pay property taxes. So this property has not generated taxes for the city or the schools, property taxes, yeah, for the city or the schools. With the development agreement and the agreement that the city negotiated with the schools in order to finance the project and the public components of that, including the affordable housing, the public plaza, the pocket park, the public parking, and preservation of the historic Curtis Block Building, as well as the public restrooms, including the development of the central part of our downtown. We did enter into, this would be, this tax increment finding agreement also does, we made that agreement with the schools as well, so that we will be helping to make them whole with some of what they, currently, they receive zero dollars from this property, and they will be receiving funds from this property of estimated about twenty-two million and estimated total new TIFs. And then we will also be receiving property taxes, so the developer will be paying taxes on the current value of the property, and then the increased property values based on the development of this property. Those go into a special fund, which help with that cost of the development. We also, in part of that agreement with the schools, include some of the income tax that the city would receive, that we are transferring some of that funds to the schools to help make them whole. Any corrections from the administration on anything I just said? Does that all sound accurate? Thank you. Okay. It's a lot to go through. We've been spending, we spent many years working on this project, so exciting to see it start to come to fruition. I do not see anyone else signed in to speak on this topic or any e-commerce. Any further discussion from colleagues? Councilman Bullock.
I'm Chair. First, I've collected before to recognize a special guest, Mr. Karon, Karon Waits, Jr. is Financial Secretary from UAW Level Ten Fifty. I want to acknowledge him, a good friend who's here. Thank you for being here, sir. So on this proposed legislation, a couple of thoughts. First, you know, I respect Mr. Zachem, as you know, your work and your clear-minded, focused invitations to City Council to get very clear about what we're doing, and I respect that. I'd like to divide the topic into two points. One is, why would the city consider tax abatements for an affluent developer or a developer that's well-capitalized? The other part, which may be equally or more important, is what is the city contemplating doing for everyone else? And on that, I think, you know, let's continue the discussion. I hope everybody stays for items twelve and thirteen on the agenda today because I would like to invite my colleagues in the city to begin a discussion about property tax reform. That's primarily a state issue, and we have some state leaders with us tonight, two state representatives who are very intelligent leaders on this issue, whom I hope will speak, as well as an expert from Neighborhood Progress, Inc., somewhere. And the cities and municipal governments could have a role in that, and I would like to argue that we're going to be well-served by taking initiative and not just waiting back for the property tax policies that our current state government leadership may implement, because it may not be successful for local governments, and it may not really do much, if anything, for working families who've been in their homes for a long time, middle-class families who are going paycheck to paycheck. So that's a big part of this discussion. Flipping back to the first part, why would, is it justified, or why would the city consider tax incentives? There's very timely news coverage in The Plain Dealer these days, Ann Staver, I think. And so I'd like to actually invite all of us and the administration to do what that news coverage says, which is to make sure that there's accountability on any tax incentives and that the developer performs. That's a fair critique, I think. And I do, I do know there's performance guarantees on loans. That's different than tax incentives here, but there's a mix of financing here. The city owns the land. The city could have sold the land to a developer and let the developer develop any kind of project that it wants to underneath the zoned commercial rules. That's not what we did. What we instead did was we stood in the shoes of the community and said, we want a high-quality, very dense development, which goes well above what the market would normally do. My shorthand for no tax incentives, no co-investment by the community in this property would be, you'd get another Marx Plaza. And that's not what we're going for here. I think what the, and that's not to be negative on any other store or development or commercial property in the community, it's just that we have that already. And what we could use is new market, new kinds of housing to generate more development, not just at this site, but up and down Detroit, up and down Madison, where it belongs, dense areas. And we hope, we don't know, that more market-rate apartments add more supply and over time brings down prices and preserves what we all care deeply about, which is socioeconomic diversity in our town. The parking garage, I think, is the driver of the costs, as I've come to learn from the development experts. So we could build the project without a parking garage, which is to say we can't build the project, because with hundreds of parking spaces, and the city has an obligation to park eighty employees of the human, excuse me, the Family Health Center from Cleveland Clinic, that's part of our earlier covenants, plus shoppers, there'll be public access, but there'll also be residential parking. That is a reality. I think I see some of my neighbors who are leaning on the way on bicycles. I think I see some of my neighbors who are leaning on the way on bicycle and mode shift from, away from cars to non-cars correctly, I think, pointing out that if we could shift away from overly reliance on cars, that would open a lot of things up financially and otherwise. So here's to getting to there one day. So that's my best answer that I can provide. I hope that's helpful. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further comments, discussion? Hearing none on the motion to adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions? Thank you. And that motion passes.
Item eight, ordinance 26, 2025, an ordinance to take effect immediately to approve the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as parts of the various component codes of the codified ordinances and to provide for the publication of such new matter.
Move to defer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item nine, ordinance 27, 2025, an ordinance to take effect immediately repealing Chapter 160 Audit Committee of the Codified Ordinances.
Move to defer.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. This one's been referred to Finance Committee, which is why we're just waiting on that hearing before we take action. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 10, communication from President Keppel and Councilmember Strebig regarding administrative policy on gender.
Dear colleagues, over the past several months, the lives, livelihoods, and well-being of transgender individuals have been severely threatened by discriminatory processes coming from the state and federal levels of government. These policies amount to a cruel attempt to erase the identities and silence the voices of members of the transgender community, resulting in many of our friends and neighbors feeling unsafe and uncertain. The following resolution seeks to provide reassurance and protection to our transgender neighbors and their families by proposing an administrative policy to be enacted citywide. The policy articulates that city resources, including funds and employee time, shall not be utilized for the purpose of investigating individuals pursuing gender-affirming health care for themselves or a family member, nor will resources be used to pursue medical providers who may provide this care or to follow up on any reports of such. The policy further makes explicit that any and all information the city receives about the health care of individuals is subject to Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act, HIPAA, and that benefits eligible City of Lakewood employees will continue to receive gender-affirming care through the city's insurance provider if needed. Additionally, anticipating the potential return of anti-drag bills at the state level, the policy addresses freedom of gender expression and performance. It is our firm belief that this policy reflects the current attitude and practice of our city administration, which has expressed no desire to carry out the misguided priorities of our state and local governments in this regard. Each year during budget season, the city reflects on its long-term and short-term priorities, which are many, and require the focused time, attention, and dedication of staff, plus the support of taxpayers. There is simply not room in the city's budget or staff capacity to indulge these unconscionable policies, which do nothing but distract us from our primary goals of building a strong, sustainable, and welcoming community.
Move to receive and file that communication?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Councilwoman Strebig.
Thank you, President Keppel, and thank you for your thoughtful work in creating an administrative policy with actionable directions. Under our very shrinking home rule authority, you've provided clear direction as to the priority of investments into lawful and private matters. These directions may provide some peace of mind for our community and not just meaningless verbiage that can often be more damaging through misinterpretation. Protection for our trans neighbors, drag performers, and city employees is a necessary step as some state and federal officials continue their reckless attacks on regular people. Instead of protecting our rights, providing more opportunities, and moving us forward, they insist on knocking us down for their own perceived benefits. This is absolutely backwards and must end. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, council colleagues? Vice President Baker.
Thank you, Council President and Councilperson Strebig. I know, you know, I think sometimes, and do our, you know, advocates in the audience, you know, sometimes it takes a little time to get the right policy, and we're not just trying, and I appreciate your leadership and your leadership on this issue, we're not just trying to be the first, we're trying to be the most thoughtful, and we're trying to do what we can within our powers of self-government, which essentially, this is deprioritization and protection for our residents. It follows a similar path that we used with marijuana before it was made legal in the state, and then also abortion care that we did reproductive rights a couple of years ago with Councilman Schachner. So I support this, and I think it shows that, you know, if you take the time to create the right policy, that you can get the right policy outcomes, and I appreciate everyone's patience in working with council presidents, but I had no doubt that you guys would get there. So thank you.
Other comments from council members? Councilman Bullock.
Madam President, thank you to you and Councilwoman Strebig. I'm happy to support the proposed resolution. I guess it's next on the agenda. Is this gonna, do we anticipate passing it tonight or referring it to committee?
I anticipate referring it to committee. We've had some conversation with some other entities, including ACLU, TransOhio, and the LGBT Center of Greater Cleveland, in doing this type of work. As a non-trans person myself, I think it's important that, you know, it's always nothing about us without us, so we want to make sure we have the voices at the table who have expertise in this matter and can advise us. So we've received positive preliminary feedback, but I think it's important that we make sure to give it the full hearing.
Thank you. And so, you know, just, I guess the bigger point is, it's important that we, as a city government, reflect the values of our community. I think our community is inclusive, welcoming, tolerant, wants people of all kinds to have the freedom to be who they are, live here happily, safely, and successfully. It's also important that we do something to show some leadership to our state, our county, our region, our country. So I appreciate the leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hamilton Steiner.
Thank you, President Keppel, and thank you, Councilmember Strebig, for bringing this forward. I think this, I like this roadmap that we're using, that has been used in previous legislations. I think as we continue to see more and more attacks on local governments and our abilities to rule, especially for charter communities, I think we need to use this as a strategy to fight back and have more local control. And I also think we can use this type of mechanism and doing this type of resolutions and legislation to create a community where we're coexisting. And I actually have, this was, I had a really good conversation this weekend at a block party, and in gentleman, and I asked him, you know, what he likes about Lakewood, and he said that he likes that, you know, we all are different. You can be, you know, whatever demographic and, you know, political affiliation, but we all get along. And it was just a reminder that, for me even, that that is what we are going for. We're going for a peaceful coexistence, and I think we, as a local government, if we can be thoughtful in this manner, we can create that through legislation. So I hope that we all can be on the same page and keep that in mind.
Thank you. Councilman Evans?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks to my colleagues for bringing this forward. I agree with Councilwoman Baker, it's very thoughtfully done, yes, and I agree that using that, you know, past mechanisms to make this work is a great idea. I'm very proud to support the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to acknowledge former Vice President Schachner, who helped create this mechanism, a, was not afraid to adopt some of his strategies and helped show us that way, as well as be thoughtful about how we take into account some of the specific attacks that we've seen recently and try to get ahead of them. I also want to acknowledge that when we speak about state government, we're not necessarily speaking about any state representatives who are here with us tonight and by any means. So when we're speaking about state government, we are mostly speaking about the supermajority that does not stand with us on these issues. Okay, we do have some folks signed in to speak on this issue. So first up, when I call your name, you can come up to the microphone. It is already on, so you don't have to push anything. You'll have up to five minutes. You'll address me, the chair. Our first up is Ashley Welly. I apologize if I am misreading your handwriting.
Hi, my name is Ashley Lubecky. I'm sorry, I might have wrote it down fast, but I have been a Lakewood resident for five years. I'm here on behalf of DSA Cleveland and a part of the LGBT community to say thank you for introducing this. I did also want to know, I appreciate you getting other perspectives from like TransOhio and ACLU, but this legislation was researched and drafted by trans and gender nonconforming folks in DSA? So there was already some, like, trans people who have looked at it. And I, yeah, so I just ask you to pass this legislation, and I also wanted to note, there was a couple people that came late that did want to speak on this. If they would be able to, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, and we did incorporate some of the things from the version sent from DSA. Did adapt it some to fit within the framework of what we've been able to do in terms of administrative policy before. But yes, that was also a good contribution. And we will, I did see some other people sign in to speak too, so they'll get that opportunity. All right, next up is Robin Zakowski.
Hi, good evening, Chair. My name's Robin Zakowski. I've been a resident of Lakewood for the last two years. I've been in DSA for the past couple of years also, and with the resolution, we really love and appreciate all that you've been doing for us, and also went to the last City Council meeting, and I feel like this is the only issue that everybody spoke about and had questions on, and I'm really appreciative of everything that has been going forward. My biggest concern right now is urgency is, and time is not in our favor with this administration in the state government and in the federal government, and also in the general public. There have been lots of recent attacks on making trans people either victimized, disappear, or feel discriminated against. Even recent political events have tried to frame trans people for things that they have not done, and things that we don't stand for. So my urgency is that I would love to get other people's perspectives in, however, if I could speak candidly, it's a lot of bureaucratic bullshit. I really want to get this done as soon as possible before there is a time that it is too late. It's already too late. People are moving out of Lakewood to go to Chicago, or go to Pennsylvania, or places that they feel safer. That's happening now. That's not, we're not talking, oh, it's coming up. It's happened now. And I think that trying to go through other means to try and get other people's perspective, trans people are here, we've talked to people of Lakewood, they are in support of the resolution. So my biggest concern is waiting, because we don't have time. There is no time. It's already happening. So my urgency is that we do it now, and I understand wanting to do it right the first time, however, I don't think there will be a next time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Everybody, I think I have on this sheet, it looks like, did we have some more folks sign in, I think? Okay. Well, if there's other folks, there are other folks who want to speak on this topic? If you do, just come on up and say your name and, we'll add it.
Hello. Hi, my name is Skylar Urban. I am a resident of Lakewood, and I also am a teacher right across the border in Cleveland. I'm also an openly trans individual who is teaching in the school system, and it is scary right now, not just for our students who are suffering, but for the teachers who are also suffering and fighting the same fight that the kids are. I think a lot of times, there's this thought that the people in danger in situations like this are only young kids. But I'm, I'm a professional in the field of teaching, and I have faced discrimination every day of my career. But I also know how important it is to continue to show up and, sorry, to be a positive example for these students, because when I was their age, I didn't really know that it was an option to make it to adulthood and openly be yourself. So even though I have faced a lot of discrimination, I have had to file legal discrimination charges and go to the state about some of the things that have happened to me in the school system, I'm continuing to show up authentically every single day for my students, but it is deeply, deeply terrifying. And I'm one angry parent away from losing my career, losing my teaching license, losing my livelihood, and waiting for a committee to make a decision that has already been made by the community of Lakewood is not doing anything to protect that. We have hundreds of signatures from Lakewood residents approving of this and showing support for this legislation. It has been passed in other cities with success, and I frankly agree with Robin in saying that time is of the essence, and we don't have time. If we had time, I wouldn't have had to change jobs because I was being discriminated against so strongly. It's already too late, but we do have the opportunity to change it now, and I just really implore you to pass this with as much haste as you can, so that we can give the residents of Lakewood that feeling of safety and belonging that we all want them to have so much. So, thank you.
Yes, I see Christina McCollum?
Hi again. I'm Christina McCollum. I live at 1629 St. Charles, and I think probably most of you know, one of my children, sorry, that someone who I love is trans, and I know a lot of trans people, particularly young adults. And I wanted to thank you for the thoughtfulness that you've exhibited as you've been working on this and getting it together in the last two weeks from the last time, as well as the broad nature of the resolution. And I really appreciate that you are making use of this strategy to cover bases ahead of things happening that would affect Lakewood specifically, and as well as getting perspectives of other organizations. I know it takes time, but I do appreciate, you know, what do I know as a cisgender, middle-aged white lady? Not very much. So I appreciate you wanting to do that. And then a question, since we all probably agree that time is of the essence, do you have a timeline for the committee work and passage? Thank you.
So, I'm just looking to see if there's anyone else. I don't see anyone else signed to speak on this issue. I will answer that question, although public comments not always question and answer, but I'll be happy to answer that question. Anyone else that wanted to speak on this topic? Come on up.
Hello, my name is Ryan Bergstrom. I'm a resident of Ward Four. I'm just coming to speak in favor of this resolution. I'm also from the Democratic Socialists of America, and yeah, I share a lot of my friends and comrades' statements. And yeah, I share a lot of my friends and comrades' statements. You know, trans people are at threat more and more every day. You know, they're demonized for crimes they don't do. And yeah, just time is of the essence, just needs to get passed now. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this topic? Okay, so, and, oh, yep, come on up. Sorry, I didn't see.
My name is Grace. I'm a new resident of Ward One. I got here a little late, so apologies if I'm repeating any sentiments that have been said before, but I just want to speak again in support of this legislation. My partner is trans, and we have had serious conversations of if we want to get married, if the United States is the safest place for us to live. So seeing this legislation, like preemptively trying to protect his rights, is really powerful for me. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else on this topic? Okay, so I'll address the question about timeline. You know, I would expect, I believe we have some room on the committee schedule in the next couple of weeks. We're planning to have a committee of the whole anyway, so we probably have it at that same meeting. And then we'd come back to full, the next full council meeting, which would be the first meeting in October, October 6th. At this point would be the meeting where it would be adopted. So that would be the timeline. And in terms of, just want to address, so this resolution is a little different than the ones that I've seen other cities do. And that's why I did take a little bit of trying to be thoughtful with it, because a lot of the resolutions that we see are similar to things that this body has already passed in support of trans rights, in support of LGBT people. We've passed numerous ones. We've passed ones this year in support of Trans Day of Visibility, Trans Day of Remembrance. We've passed Pride resolutions. We've passed many, many Lesbian Week of Visibility. We've, we've done many of those, and we'll continue to do those, and certainly continue to support it. But those resolutions tend to be more of just acknowledging our belief system and wanting to express that to the community. It also, when we do Pride, it authorizes the administration to fly the Pride flag. So that's not nothing, of course. Those are important things to signal. This one actually sets up a policy, and, which is different than what a lot of the other cities have done. When I looked at, I saw some other cities do theirs, and they express that they, you know, want to support gender-affirming care, but when you look at the language, a lot of them, it really doesn't provide any protection. It just says, we think that you should be protected. However, it acknowledges that state law overrides what we can do locally. That's the truth. And so we try to find where we can thread the needle here of what we have local control over. That keeps, continues to shrink a lot of the time, but we do have local control over how we allocate our funds and what we prioritize in terms of staff time with the police, with the prosecutor's office, what we do for our own healthcare policy within the city. So these are all things that we can control, and those are a little bit different than other resolutions. And that's why I want to make sure that what we do stands up in the court of law, because what I do not want to do is tell people that, a lot of times, there can be this thought that, oh, you know, we certainly want everyone to feel safe in Lakewood. You know, I'm the parent of a trans college student. I want them to feel like they can come home and be safe in Lakewood. And then, but the reality is that Lakewood is still in the state of Ohio. And so we need to do what we can, of course, all of the time, and we want to make sure that what we are telling people is the truth, it is legal, and that it stands up, and that we are not saying, not giving a false sense of protection, but giving as much possible protection as we can. So that's kind of the word I'm trying to thread the needle here, on making sure that we are doing something that's actionable and that actually has some teeth to it. We'll continue to do also resolutions just expressing our support always, but this one actually does some things. So that's why I want to make sure that we give it that due diligence in committee. Okay, so this is actually, we're still on the communication regarding the resolution right now. So I believe I have a motion to receive and file this communication. On that motion to receive and file the communication, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 11, Resolution 202545. A resolution to take effect immediately adopting the City of Lakewood Gender Freedom Policy in response to attacks on transgender rights at the state and national levels.
Move to refer to Committee of the Whole?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 12, Communication from Councilmember Bullock, Responding to High Housing Costs in Lakewood by Urging State Government to Provide New Tools to Local Governments to Implement Targeted Property Tax Relief Programs Via Residential Stability Zones.
Councilman Bullock.
Thanks, Madam President. Before I read the communication, just want to flag that we've got a couple speakers. I hope they've properly gotten signed in, but just in case they haven't, I want to double check the list. And also to signal that I've got a proposed substitute for the following item, to propose at the appropriate time. So, Dear Mayor and Members of Council, over the last six years, the high price of housing has been affecting Lakewood residents, renters, and property owners alike. Many have expressed concern about the pressure that high prices impose upon both our longtime neighbors and our newer neighbors, whether homeowners or tenants in one of our wonderful homes or businesses, or apartment buildings. Both are feeling pressure from inflation in the general economy. Costs of groceries have been going up, utility bills, gasoline, other basics are rising faster than our incomes, and also from the housing market, which is putting pressure on Lakewood's longtime identity as a socioeconomically diverse community. Housing prices have risen regionally, yet Lakewood's have risen more steeply, more than 40% higher than the region by one measure. Citywide, our total property value has doubled in the last six years alone to 1.8 billion. These strong property values bring with them some important benefits, but they also bring with them annual carrying costs, property taxes, that present difficulties to many. And those have been magnified in the last six years, given the sudden and large increase in valuations without an adjustment of how property taxes are assessed for inside mills, the first 10 mills on our property tax bills, which adjust automatically up or down. Combine this with the long-term State of Ohio policy to shift government revenues away from income taxes and to cut in half the share of state revenues allocated to local governments via the local government fund, and the effect is that local property taxes have taken a larger and larger role in funding essential services from city, four cities, libraries, school districts, park districts, and more. Notably, the most recent state budget delivered two high net worth individuals a very significant tax relief on income taxes while delivering zero to working-class homeowners. And it's a false choice for state government to, in effect, help property owners to strain their family finances to the point of breaking in some cases, or to harm their quality of life by closing or greatly reducing community services from police, fire, libraries, parks, and schools, the loss of which would harm property values as well. Both are unacceptable. State government needs to reform its approach to taxes and public revenue to rebalance cost-sharing and to remove distortionary effects on our communities of high reliance on property taxes. An example of this is the, the public school funding system, which relies greatly on local property taxes, and the Ohio Supreme Court found the system unconstitutional back in 1997 in the landmark case DeRolf versus State. The governor and the general assemblies have many proposals before them. Local governments do not traditionally have the tools or the powers to address these matters outside of levies. Local governments have little to no tools to control local property taxes. More targeted and effective solutions are available at the state government level, and some are being considered, and I'm not sure that city governments should hang back and just trust the approach that many are proposing. Tonight, I invite us to express support for one, at least one such proposal, and in my proposed amendment, more than one such proposal. Senate Bill 42 is a bipartisan proposal by Senators Michelle Reynolds and Herschel Craig to authorize residential stability zones in which homeowners may qualify for partial property tax exemption. This would create new tools for local governments to optionally implement targeted reduction of property taxes. I'm going to skip some of the detail. The merits of this proposal are that it equips local government to be a part of the solution, although I would say that the fundamental responsibility is the disproportionate shift by state government, the choice by state government for more than 10 years to cut other taxes and put more and more on the shoulders of local property taxes, which is arguably getting to be unsustainable. Without such new tools, it's difficult for the City of Lakewood or any other local government to provide an effective response, if that is something we would want to consider. Additional steps are called for as well, beyond what I'm discussing here. I propose that the City of Lakewood leaders work to understand the problem and identify solutions around which we might engage with state government leaders to begin providing a response to our Lakewood neighbors who are experiencing financial difficulties more and more. Please join me in prioritizing this important issue by considering this for referral to Committee of Council's choosing. Thanks.
Thank you. Given the level of detail in that communication, I'm inclined to refer it with the resolution to the same committee, so I'll make a motion to refer to Finance Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion, council members? I know we have some folks signed in to speak on this one, I believe. Do that now rather than with the resolution? Okay. So we have Honorable Bride Rose Sweeney with us tonight. Want to come on up? Representative?
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, Council, President, and all of the council, thank you so much, and specifically to Councilwoman Bullock, for introducing this resolution. I am State Representative Bride Rose Sweeney, and as the ranking member of the Ohio House Finance Committee, and a member who was appointed to the Joint Review Property Tax Review Committee that was created last year to try and attempt to address the crippling property tax issue that is burdening Ohioans all across this state. Out of all the issues in my seven years down in Columbus, I have seen very few that regardless of urban districts, rural districts, economically disadvantaged, more affluent districts. I'm sure everyone in this room has heard from seniors, from renters, because renters do pay property taxes, about how because of the inaction of their state government, that they are being quite literally taxed out of their homes, deciding to forego other necessary needs because they cannot afford this issue. And it's really important that we understand why property taxes are so high. Ohio is the most overloved state in the country. No other citizens, homeowners, renters, have more of a responsibility on them to fund their own local services than Ohio. And there is only one entity in the state that's responsible for that decision, and it is our state legislature. Our state legislature, over the past 15 years, has made decision after decision to first not do anything about the housing affordability, but it's not just inaction that has caused this problem, but actual intentional decisions by our state legislature that has decided to take money away from local governments, from our police and our fire, from our local schools, from our libraries, that has forced local governments to ask the citizens to pay for more. But also, which I think is the most insulting part of this, they've also actually taken away direct property tax relief that was instituted by Republicans and Democrats just not that long ago, in 2013. Every single senior in the state of Ohio got property tax relief. But in 2013, the Republican legislature decided to gut that program. Less than 20% of seniors today receive any relief. And of those who do get relief, they receive a fraction of what they got just a few years ago. The following year, in 2014, lawmakers decided to get rid of state rollbacks on new levies. The state of Ohio used to pay for a portion of every homeowner's property taxes because this is a shared responsibility. And while this has been happening year after year, as the affordability crisis has been exploding, we've also not been funding our obligations. Just in this past budget, the state of Ohio gave the lowest amount of money ever into our public schools. When we do not fund our local services, property taxes go up, and we are faced with this issue that is before us. And while property taxes are complicated, I'm here to say that the solution is not. We have seen solution after solution, and I'm saying that with quotations, because there has been no real action by our state government to truly actually deliver relief. And we know how to do that, because we did it just 15 years ago. We should have a homestead exemption that actually helps seniors stay in their homes. We could institute a circuit breaker that could give an income tax cut to those who disproportionately have high increases. That is something that is implemented in some of the deepest red states. This is not Republican, this is not Democratic. And I have heard time and time again from my colleagues down in Columbus that we can't do these things, that this is not the Save Ohio's problem. Well, I'm here to say that property taxes are high because of the choices of your state government. And if the state government, the only solution is the state of Ohio paying our shared, fair share of local governments through our libraries, through our public schools, but also indirect property tax relief. All of the proposals that I've outlined are bipartisan and can happen. I was able to speak at the City of Cleveland last year, and they opposed a resolution. And I thank this body for considering, continuing to demand more from your state government, because all of our mutual constituents so desperately need it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you so much, Representative Sweeney, for being here. Next, Representative Chris Glassburn.
Good evening, council, mayor, city officials, and everybody here for whichever issue brought you to a city council meeting. It's exciting to see so many people involved with their local government. Prior to becoming a state representative this year, I served on North Olmsted City Council for seven years, was the Finance Chair, and was faced with similar decisions and problems that you face now. I watched as my own city government had direct aid from the state cut in half over the past 15 years. Aid for police cut in half. Aid for fire and EMS cut in half. Watched our school district get almost zeroed out of state funding. And this is not a unique situation to my city of North Olmsted. It's not even to Lakewood. This is a widespread problem. As has been mentioned, the state has systemically disinvested from all facets, whether it's libraries, or schools, or cities, as well as our safety forces. Want to address a couple, a couple of items, though, on this topic. First is, one of my side projects, if you will, is, I am very involved with my local food bank. We do a distribution at one of our elementary schools. North Olmsted is a middle-class community, not that actually demographically dissimilar on a socioeconomic basis to Lakewood. And since we started our program in 2020, the number of folks coming for food assistance has increased month after month, every single year, despite changes in the economy. The overwhelming segment are senior citizens who are having trouble keeping up with property taxes. That's driving our growth. And I imagine you're experiencing similar things. When I sat in your chair, North Olmsted was trying to find a way to do a solution, because as is the case now, the state government continues to fail, disinvest from the property tax relief, and cuts the money you have for your operations at the same time. We were, we, through painful budgeting, able to cut a couple of things in order to do very modest property tax relief. But when we made that decision, we had no tools. What I mean by that, and this is part of what Councilman Bullock's proposal, I believe, addresses, is we could not say, we want to do property tax for seniors relief. We could not do it for homeowners. We couldn't do any kind of targeted program, because the state did not allow it. So it was a very difficult decision to even look at doing property tax relief that would disproportionately not go to the people most in need. So your involvement on this issue, on behalf of your citizens, is critically important. This is the number-one issue in our state for urban, rural, suburban communities alike. The state government needs to hear from you, needs to hear from a lot more communities, not just those in Caga County, but throughout the state, about the real problem that seniors are having to face disproportionately. And I'll just close with this in mind. There's, there's a There's a lot of academic talk about whether income taxes, or sales taxes, or property taxes are more progressive. The reality is, is with property tax, if your income goes down, your income taxes go down to some degree. If you're, if you have less money, your sales tax burden goes down, because you have less to spend. You can't downsize 10% of your home. You can't get rid of 15% of your home this week, and then pick it up when you pick up more work, and pick up an extra shift. It's there. And so this is a critical issue, because the only option people have is to move and go somewhere else. And that's not an option I think Lakewood wants, that's not an option anyone in the state should want. And so, again, thank you for lending your voice to this critical issue, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Representative Glassburn. Okay. Let's see. What's that? Trying to find them. We've got three different sheets up here, so I'm just trying to make sure I don't miss anyone. All right. Edward Stockhauser?
Good evening, President, Mayor, members of council. My name is Ed Stockhausen. I work at Cleveland Neighborhood Progress, where we've been leading a statewide coalition on the topic of property tax relief since 2021. But the work actually started in around 2016, when we, and a partnership with Greater Ohio Policy Center, doing work on affordable housing, started to hear a lot more from people in housing markets across Ohio, who were raising concerns about rising property taxes. And that was before the pandemic, and the sales boom that happened then, and then everything that has happened subsequently. And that's largely because property taxes are, the way that they are calculated, is laid out very clearly in law. And nobody grows up wanting to become an expert on property taxes. But it's what we need, and it's what we have, because this is such a rising concern across Ohio communities. And that's especially true with the structure whereby county auditors, every three years, whether it's the triennial or sexennial reappraisal process, they are constantly, across Ohio, reevaluating the value of people's homes. Property taxes and property tax relief matter a lot, but the one thing we know about that is that you and other locally-elected officials aren't empowered to help low-income homeowners. You are empowered with other tools, though, and largely in the domain of economic development. You can put in place tax increment financing, TIFs. You can use tax abatement to encourage investment. But who can afford those things? Ultimately, it's people who can afford a new build, or a substantial rehab of a home, or developers who want to be able to use some of those property taxes to make additional improvements on those parcels or in that area. And there is very good public use for those dollars. The Ohio Revised Code empowers you guys to do that. It gives you parameters to work within, but it says, make good choices. You don't have that type of power to help low-income homeowners and renters who just want to stay in place. And that, to repeat what the state rep said, that's especially true for seniors who want to age in place. It's true for families who want to keep their children going to their neighborhood schools, accessing public libraries and other public services. It is really disruptive to all of their lives, to their quality of life, and even just to them living, to disrupt a senior's ability to age in place, or a family's ability to grow in place. Senate Bill 42, which is referenced in this ordinance before you, is the product of our coalition's work. Our statewide coalition spent several years evaluating what could be done, especially because the majority caucuses in the General Assembly don't necessarily agree with everything that we believe would be the best-case, the silver-bullet solutions to these issues. But our coalition strongly believes that we can't let perfect be the enemy of the good. We have to make as much good effort as we can to get good policy passed while still driving for better things in the future. Senate Bill 42, legislation that would allow cities, that give them the permissive authority to implement residential stability zones, represents good movement. It's not a silver bullet. Our coalition also supports circuit breakers. You'll be hard-pressed to find a Republican General Assembly find over $800 million to implement that kind of legislation, though. That is why we support a fleet of options, a toolbox, so that local officials can take action, when state lawmakers, this General Assembly, might not always be ready to take as much action as you want to see today, to protect your residents today, while also helping guide investment for the future of your community. It's a complicated issue, more complicated than five minutes allows, but that's the value of committees. Councilman Bullock and I have had a chance to speak on the phone for a while over the summer, and more recently. We would welcome the invitation to share what we have developed already in terms of legislation, some guidance around that, but also the same materials that we've shared with the Governor's Working Group on property taxes. You should have that same information, so that when legislation passes, you're not surprised by it, and ideally, you've had that chance to weigh in. Thank you.
Thank you. Very thoughtful comments. All right. Let me see if we have anyone else on this one? I have 47. I think it's everyone I have signed in to speak. Was there anyone else who want, come on up, Ms. Blackmar?
I didn't need to sign. Okay. Well, I'm Beth Blackmar. I live over on Broccoli Avenue, and I've lived in Lakewood since 1991. I bought my house in 1996. I am with an organization called Citizens for Property Tax Reform, and we are driving the issue now. We are forcing action in the legislature. Let's hope it works. But I wanted to say that I am impressed with the thoughtful discussion I'm hearing this evening on various issues. And I'm speaking tonight to support the efforts in the direction of some sort of property tax reform, in whatever way we can do this. And also, I want to simplify this for everyone. I want to put some numbers here, I want to talk about my experience, because while legislative, the property tax reform issue is huge, it's cumbersome, it's like this big Jenga tower, you pull one block and everything falls apart. That's what it's like. It's really simple from the perspective of a homeowner like myself, and of renters. For example, now, as someone had mentioned earlier, renters pay property tax, they sure in the heck, too. And guess what? Since, in the last 10 to 15 years, rents have doubled in Lakewood. They have doubled. They are fast becoming unaffordable. We used to be a very affordable area, where young families could come in and start their homes. So let me give you some numbers. In 2007, property tax made up 15% of my entire mortgage payment. 15%? Is it 15%? That sounds reasonable, right? I mean, I wouldn't pay any attention. Fine, fine. In 2025, it makes up 50, and almost 55%, because I just got a escrow shortfall because of an increase in my valuation. That's what this means. It means that in Cogga County, as of February, we had 17,544 people in default on their property taxes. It means that seniors are the fastest, the fastest-losing segment of this population, because they're easy to find, you can serve them with papers, and you can get them out of that house, and you can collect the taxes. So they've been paying on X amount, you may be paying $220,000 on $220,000 valuation, and you get booted out of your home, and they auction your house off for $60,000, or $40,000, or $45,000, and you've been paying on this other amount all these years. So this is a rough issue. And this is something, I know there's not, I know there's not, you can't, there's not a whole lot that can be done from a city perspective, but I would really, really encourage anything that you all would be willing to put in writing in this direction, because we are coming for it. And we're losing. We're losing anchor homeowners here in Lakewood. We're losing seniors. I mean, there's one person on our street that just moved out the other two weeks ago, because they couldn't afford any longer the property taxes here, but it doesn't matter, because you go from the frying pan into the fire because of the high rents. I don't want to leave Lakewood. I mean, I want to come out of here feet-first. That's it, that's how I want to leave. You know, I love my neighbors, I love Lakewood, you know? So I appreciate that you all are paying attention to this issue. I thank you. And I want Lakewood to, once again, be that place where young families can get started here again, like they used to. Not like today, where they can't afford it, where the new people that are moving into Lakewood are coming from out of town, and out of state, and they come from, like, Chicago and DC, and Lakewood prices look great to them, but it's like, no, no, they're not great, no, no, you know? But thank you so much for bringing this up, Tom, and putting this forward, and I support anything you all are willing to do in the area of property tax reform. Thanks.
Thank you. And I apologize, I missed you, because you have the SB 42, and so this one is our Resolution 2547. But anyway, Mr. Zakim, come on up.
First, I would like to thank Councilman Bullock for bringing this up. I think he and I, and Beth, agree in general that this is a huge problem, and I appreciate the representatives coming tonight to address this. And I also would greatly appreciate Lakewood pushing harder to help resolve this. I definitely appreciate what the representatives have done, but frankly, I've given up on the state doing anything, which is why I decided to become involved in property taxes. As I said before, starting out as a landlord 15 years ago, I've never had a single person actually purchase in Lakewood, and that applies to all income levels. It's not just my tenants that are scraping by, but those that are doing fairly well for themselves. They also cannot afford to be in Lakewood. I would also like to remind city councils that seems to be interested in doing its part. Lakewood does have, within its city charter, almost 14 mills. Well, I absolutely support funding the police and the services that we need to fund. I think some of that is, well, I know that has outpaced inflation, and I would love to see Lakewood do its part to see what it can do to reduce that. Yes, I do believe a lot of the issue lies at the state level, but it's important for Lakewood to do what it can, because everybody needs help. It's the seniors, it's the renters, it's the lower-income people, it's everybody. Even as a small landlord, I don't want to hand out, I don't believe in it, but I'm to the point where I'm not sure how I'm going to get capital projects done, because property taxes have gone through the roof, and that is by far my largest expense. And it's just not sustainable. And I think we all know, TIFs and abatements can help larger entities, but for the average person like myself, it doesn't do much. So it's time to roll everything back and help everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else who wanted to speak on this issue? I don't see anyone else sign in, but I've got three different pieces of paper up here, so I just want to make sure I didn't miss anyone. Nope? Okay. So we are still on the communication. We have a motion to refer this communication to Finance, and then I anticipate making a motion to refer the accompanying resolution to the Finance Committee. At that committee meeting, I think it would be helpful if Director Mahoney, if we might be able to kind of go through how the city's property tax works, and how it all comes from, and our property tax ratings in the charter and that sort of thing. Okay. All right. And also, just on that issue, too, it is challenging, as we have lost local government funds. As a former librarian, and the spouse of a librarian, I appreciate how much everyone mentioned libraries tonight, so thank you for that. We did manage to hold on to a fair amount of state funding. However, despite what you might have heard from the majority party, they did still lose funds, and we lost the state library fund, so. But we appreciate everyone's advocacy on behalf of libraries and local funding. But we do have, and locally here on the city's website, there are a number of programs that we do our best to help out with. There is a tax increment financing program for homeowners who do work on their homes. There are some programs for deferred loans for seniors. So there are a number of resources, but of course, we could do more with more resources from the state, for sure. Okay. On the motion to refer the communication to Finance, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 13, Resolution 202547. A resolution to respond to high housing costs in Lakewood by urging state government to provide new tools to local governments to implement targeted property tax relief programs via residential stability zones.
We have to refer to Finance.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Madam President?
Councilman Bullock.
So I've got a proposed substitute amendment that I've shared with council members and the clerk, and I think the clerk has shared it electronically with the administration as well. I don't know if we want to consider that for a motion, so that that is the text referred, but what that text does, and I have it in red line, is to essentially incorporate some of the points, the additional policy points that we heard from our speakers. The version on the docket is narrow, is more narrow, and I think it's important, and I appreciated the expert feedback I received, that, you know, for example, the proposed amendment would say at the beginning, "A resolution to respond to high housing costs in Lakewood by urging state government to fully and fairly fund Ohio's public schools, expand and modernize the homestead exemption, and to provide tools, et cetera." So I think the original draft that I have inadvertently implies that this is primarily a local government responsibility, and the corrected proposed amendment would make clear that the state has significant responsibility here. Just wanted to make sure I got that conveyed.
Okay. So we'd like to move to substitute the version that was sent via email at 5:34 today?
Yes, please.
Okay. So I will make that motion. Second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, and move, well, first, let's vote on that substitution. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes. And then I'll move to refer the substituted version to Finance Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Item 14, Communication from Councilmember Bullock regarding continued enhancement of public input for active transportation plan and other infrastructure projects.
Councilman Bullock?
Thank you, Madam President. I recognize I've been speaking a lot in this meeting, so I'll seek to be concise. Dear Mayor and members of council, please consider the attached resolution to continue enhancing consideration of public input as part of the city infrastructure projects, including active transportation plan projects, such as the Bunce Road rehabilitation process, project, rather. City Council has heard significant public input from residents, yet the input we received at council meetings has fallen outside of the formal public input process that informs the development of project plans for at least two reasons. First, the timing of the input came after the date that the city had set as a cutoff point, and, or secondly, it was input before not the primary body of jurisdiction, which meaning it was before us, City Council, rather than a department or a board or commission. So to the degree that public input is not being incorporated into our plan development, that, to a satisfactory degree, I would argue to the residents and city council that we consider the attached resolution. Many residents affected by the Bunce Road project have worked to communicate features of the plan that they would like to see changed. of the plan that they would like to see changed and mitigate some of their concerns about potential impacts on safety, neighborhood character, and other considerations. They have made certain requests and would like to propose alternatives. Under our current process, the city's work to consider their input appears to be incomplete. And one question I would pose is where could that input be reflected? The proposed resolution seeks to enhance City Council's role so that we continue improving our consideration of public input on this and similar projects. Please join me in supporting these important concerns by considering this resolution, and I think by referring to, well, either at Council's will to either consider for adoption tonight or by referring it to a committee, sincerely.
Thank you. I think, given the scope of the proposed resolution, we would refer it to committee. I would think the communication lays out the intent, so I would refer the communication as well. So I'll make a motion to refer to Public Works and Sustainability.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion on the communication? I know we have a number of folks signed in to speak, so I can either take you on the communication or the resolution itself. But I think barring the trend we've been doing, we'll just do it on the communications so we all know what we're talking about. Any further discussion from council members on the motion to refer to Public Works and Sustainability? Okay. So we'll call up Amy Herberger. Okay. All right. Matt Herberger?
Good evening. My name's Matt Herberger. I live on 1448 Bunce Road. Regarding, I guess, comment to a resolution, comment on the resolution, 202548, pardon me, I wholeheartedly support this resolution. I don't think there's anything to fear or reason to oppose greater public input in the development and continued development of the city of Lakewood. This is how democracy should and does work. It's not always the simplest solution. I think we all know democracy can be messy. But done correctly, it can be a fair and equitable solution. I don't think development should be a zero-sum game where one group wins and the other loses. I think rather it should be a solution that benefits the greatest number of people and mitigates the losses for the rest. The city should seek out a diverse array of opinions, ideas, and concerns. When large parts of the public are excluded from the planning process, then any plan will lack the broad support required for success. The city should always seek an equitable solution, one that at least partially satisfies and incorporates the ideas and opinions of all interested parties. The city should strive to include and be inclusive of all, of all, the citizens of the municipality in the planning process. I know we've talked about a lot of serious issues here, and I don't mean to minimize it, but I just spoke about diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I think those words, I understand, are normally reserved for social causes. I don't want to minimize those words. I want to elevate them. For some, those words have become a dirty word, not for me. These are ideals we should all live by in all aspects of our life, public and private. Because when we take these words seriously, when we apply them to all of our life, including planning, then the solution we arrive at is a just solution that benefits the greatest number of people and advances the common good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Jeff Dujic.
Jeff Dujic, Bunce Road resident. I won't, I will express some disappointment that you didn't adopt this tonight, but I also appreciate wanting to take a thoughtful approach, as you typically do. I also don't want to say these things in trying to co-opt other social causes that are just as or more important. But a few things that were said tonight resonated with me. One is council's willingness to take a stand in light of what the state or federal government or others are doing and doing what's the right thing. You also said, you know, no decisions about us without us. We have over 1,100 online petition signatures and I think another 300 on paper. It's certainly worth your attention. We ask that council take a stand, not in just our interest, but in the interest of the city and safety. I spoke to you last month about my surprise at the four accidents that I spoke about in August. There was one more pedestrian car with a car making a turn, and this was in September. One of the accidents in August I mentioned was a 13-year-old on an e-scooter and a car pulling into a driveway. You're describing Bunce Road and what it will be like. I'm not here to say, don't build the path. What I'm here to say is that it is a challenging situation that needs your attention. You're bringing more bikes, you're bringing more pedestrians, you're bringing more cars because everything you're building out in Lakewood, and you're going to put up no turns onto all the other streets. And they'll find their way to Bunce and Warren and other main streets. So thank you for your consideration. Please be brave. Please look out for the best interests of the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon Mortlin.
Good evening, everybody. Shannon Mortlin, 2125 Bunce. I'm here today to fully support this resolution. The resolution makes clear that residents' voices will not only be heard, but also be incorporated into the development of critical infrastructure projects. By holding public hearings and creating formal opportunities for feedback, council is ensuring that Bunce Road's rehabilitation reflects the needs and priorities of the people who live, work, and travel here every day. And that's not just Bunce, but obviously other projects as they come up. We all agree that Bunce Road has long been in need of comprehensive rehabilitation. Improved roadway design, drainage, lighting, and crossings will make it safer for all of us. There's never been a dispute about that, about those aspects of the Bunce project or the overall active transportation plan. The resolution wisely, excuse me, reserves council's right to guide departments and offices toward responsive, cost-effective improvements. Proactive rehabilitation now prevents greater costs later and demonstrates prudent stewardship of taxpayer dollars, which is especially important with an election coming up. This resolution shows leadership by committing to both infrastructure improvement and civic engagement. Together, these steps will strengthen our community, enhance quality of life, and build trust between residents and City Hall. So I strongly urge council to pass this resolution and take responsible action. Our community deserves safe, modern, and inclusive infrastructure developed with meaningful public input. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Daniel Zelinski.
Evening, President Kepel, Mayor. Daniel Zelinski, 2197 Northland. I read this communication and this resolution here. I was a little confused about it because, as I remember, I think we're on the eve of phase something. And at that point, there's the planning process sort of stops. And it's not clear to me what the intent is with the resolution. Is it to reopen the planning process from the beginning, from the user input, as it were? And then start again? Or is it to pick up from where it is now and make some sort of adjustment? And the language in it, I'm not a lawyer or anything, but it seemed kind of cryptic to me and kind of general. It didn't, it's not clear what it's trying to achieve. There has been, you know, quite a bit of public dialogue about this. And I think it's clear what the through line is through the whole thing, and it's multi-use path or no multi-use path. So if we're going to reopen the whole planning process with this resolution, I think this council owes it to everybody that has put a considerable investment of time and energy into this whole process, if that's what it is, to say that, to say we as a council would like to see this, or we are reopening this planning process because of this sort of input about path or no path or trees or, you know, for whatever. And also, it wasn't, the timing of it's a little strange too, because all of the public input has been happening over the course of, you know, over a year now. And it's been parallel to the development of the Complete Streets Ordinance. And is the intent here that the, that this input process retroactively apply that input process which is described or outlined in that Complete Streets Ordinance? I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. I also have a number of questions similar to those, which is part of why, you know, I want to make sure we sent this to committees so we have time to understand the intent of the drafter better and can dig into those. I also have Herman, I'm sorry, Meldomado? Okay. All right. Because it says complete streets, I wasn't sure if this was about this. Okay. You can wait till the end. That's fine. Okay. Yep, that's fine. I just don't want to miss anyone. Okay. I think that's everyone? Was there, yep, come on up.
Thank you very much. Kim McDonald, 1460 Bunce Road. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'd like to thank Councilman Bullock for bringing forth this resolution. It's been like a year now that we residents from Bunce Road have come before you. And, you know, we've been told there's nothing in front of this body. Well, we really have nowhere to take our concerns. Just for a quick summary, we felt duped by the city when the letter that they sent out initially, and here it is, just mentioned bike lanes. There was nothing saying there may be two choices about bike lanes. We all assumed this was typical bike lanes. We're not against bike lanes. We're not against shared use paths. We're not against walking more, riding bikes more. We just feel basically like this plan was put in place without the thoughtful consideration by the people who live there and who know that neighborhood and see what happens on a daily basis. You've seen our yard signs. You've heard our petitions are, you know, you, this is a chance to see and hear us because we're not able to be heard by the administration. We didn't fall neatly into their two-week, or maybe it was a month, I'm sorry, a month chance to speak. Anyway, that's why we're very excited about this resolution. We look forward to a chance to be collaborative. We would like to share ideas. We don't want to say just ditch the whole idea. We would want to make it safer for everyone, and we have real concerns. That was just off the cuff because I was hoping to speak to the communication and to the resolution. So I'm running out of time. I just want, I would like to read my other statement. As residents of the city in a Bunce Road, I welcome that resolution that would enhance public engagement with the active transportation plan and for the Bunce Road project. We're not opposed, I'm repeating myself, to active transportation. We feel that enhancing alternative transportation rather than just automobiles, it's important and it only improves our city. But we would like to collaborate with the city to improve the Bunce Road plan, taking into our concerns. For instance, there are serious concerns that have not been addressed related to pedestrian safety and the electronic vehicles, the bikes, the scooters, and most recently, little mini-bikes, which I believe are electric. But they're ripping up and down the sidewalk and not very conducive to pedestrian safety. They present a real danger to walkers, children, adults, dogs being walked anyway. We who live on this street know the challenges, and we would like to be able to present our ideas and improve the plan. This resolution gives us a framework with which to do it, and not only for us, but for other projects that I think we need bigger voices or more voices to be heard, to make the best projects that we can for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else on this topic? Yep, come on up, Cassie.
Thanks. Cassie Organ. I don't have a ton prepared on this subject, mainly because I was hoping to come to this meeting tonight after reading these communications and understand it a little bit clearer. Because to echo what Dan was commenting, I'm a little confused on what this is communicating and what the end goal is, what the desired outcome is, and how it would impact the project that's already in motion. Like many people have said tonight, a lot of people have spent a lot of time and effort and advocacy hours working on this particular subject. And still, after sitting through the meeting tonight, I'm still a little fuzzy as to what the goal is for this. So I'm hoping to have a little bit more transparency because I also don't want to butt heads with my neighbors. I think people want to see what is good for this community. And as was mentioned earlier, we just had four, and I think there's actually more within the last three weeks or so incidents where pedestrians or people on bikes were injured. Some were children, some were elderly residents. It's a mix of people who need safer infrastructure. I'm a little nervous about more things coming in that will delay important projects like this as well. Because as we're seeing this stuff continue and we're not making actionable efforts, we're going to continue to see people get hurt and/or hopefully not, but potentially killed. So, yeah, I just wanted to share my two cents on that and just hoping to learn and understand a little bit more so I can better prepare myself for future meetings like this to speak eloquently on the subject. So thank you so much. I appreciate all the work that also went into the passing of the Complete Streets Ordinance and the Case Advisory Board. Just throwing those two things in there because I think the purpose, especially of the case, was to get more input from the residents. So that also has contributed a little bit to my confusion. So just some things to throw out there, hoping to speak with any or all of you that would like to continue this conversation. But, yeah, appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you. I'll just use as an opportunity to say that one of those boards and commissions I mentioned way back at the beginning of this meeting, a couple hours ago, was that we are still taking applications for boards and commissions, one of which is the Case Advisory Board, which is an opportunity for citizen engagement around this topic. Okay. Anyone else that wanted to speak on this topic? All right. We are back to the motion to refer the communication to Public Works and Sustainability. Any further discussion from Councilwoman Hamilton Steiner?
Thank you, President Kepel. So I have to admit, I look forward to a conversation on this and sort of to flesh out what Councilman Bullock's intent was in putting forth this resolution, although I believe I know and I can see it, but it just, we just need to talk through this a little bit more. And I completely understand the frustration that the Bunce Road residents have felt as I've met with them and have met with them over the past few months as well. And so it's always, so the question is, you know, what happens after a plan has been approved and it's gone through the parameters, whether or not you agree that it was done correctly or not, when it's approved? And if there's still a pretty good contingent of residents that are not happy about something, what is the recourse and how do we deal with that? And I think- And I think those are the questions that we're trying to get at through this resolution and trying to somehow get the residents' voices heard in some way. So we just have to talk through that and see what that looks like, and that's, to me, that's democracy in action. And everybody, you're not going to make everybody happy, but I think when you have a contention that is that frustrated, you can't, to me, you can't ignore it, and I think you have to figure out what can you do and you work through that. So, I look forward to a discussion about that, and that does not mean that it derails anything else, because I don't think that they're looking to derail the work. I think they're looking to say, hey, we have concerns, we want to be heard, these things have not been thought about, we live on this street, please listen to us. And I, so, yeah, that's what I have.
Thank you. Any further discussion from council members? No? All right, on the motion to refer the communication to Public Works and Sustainability, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes.
Item 15, Resolution 202548, a resolution to continue enhancing public input for active transportation plan and other infrastructure projects.
Move to refer to Public Works and Sustainability. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Madam President.
Councilwoman Bullock.
Thanks. Thanks for the discussion previously, and there were some very thoughtful questions here, and I'll do at least a little bit to try to add clarity, because I agree, it's a broadly worded proposal. So, and I also want to say, I'm seeking to speak with respect for all parties, making nobody wrong, making nobody right. Half of what I want to talk about is our process, and this really speaks to the process. The other half is the substance, and those two things kind of interrelate or like two gears, they intermesh. So, what the proposal suggests to council or invites council to consider is whether we could or should continue working on public input, and the answer to that could be yes, the answer to that could be no. And to everybody in the public, I don't know what City Council is going to say on this because we're not allowed to talk to each other outside of these meetings, and so that makes it a little bit extra awkward. Sorry for that, but we do, you know, we're sticklers for adhering to the, you know, open records and sunshine laws and so forth. So, we're having this conversation live in front of you. And I know two of my colleagues to this direction are structure people and process people, and I love and respect that about them, and so they're going to point out to me that there's already a process in place. And so, what I have envisioned in this proposal is not to replace the existing process which runs proposals through the Planning Commission, but rather consider supplementing or enhancing it. Whether that's workable or not, whether that's a good idea or not, is very much up for discussion. And if City Council were to engage in this way, you know, what would be the work product of City Council, also up for discussion. I think to answer one of the residents, what happens next? What happens next is either the project continues as it's currently approved, and I understand it may be even under contract, or City Council takes an action to say otherwise. That's my best understanding. City Council hasn't had something in front of us, so this is a kind of a beginning indirect step to evaluate whether City Council wants to get involved in the public input process. But that's not the same thing as a proposal to change, you know, introduce a change, which would be, it's pretty uncommon. Sorry, I'm getting my notes. I also want to say, I'm concerned that the way this discussion, this public discussion has unfolded has been a bit all or nothing, and has also led to some conflict between two groups of neighbors. I have neighbors who walk and bike and are leading the way for our community to keep improving, and I have neighbors who live on Bunce and have been proud of their homes for decades and who know the traffic patterns intimately, and we are neighbors, not a group and a group. I also think that the way we at the city have facilitated this conversation needs some improvement. It shouldn't be the neighbors who are on the leading edge of a discussion, especially when it's a new and big project like this, which I think is quite exciting and has been years in the making in many ways. It's really for the city to facilitate. So, one of my sons at Grant Elementary plays jackpot on the playground. That's where you throw the football. One kid throws a football, and all the other kids scrum for it, and they happily knock each other to the grass and see who can catch it. And that, to me, seems like what we've adopted for our process here. And I think instead, city leaders can and should be the facilitators, and if anything, we should be the shock absorbers, so that neighbors and neighbors work together and find common ground and preserve the ability to hear one another, rather than, right now, I think what's emerged is some people are fearful and concerned that they may lose something, and that means tensions go up and we all hear each other less accurately. So I'll take some responsibility for not speaking more clearly and more forthrightly earlier in the process. So, one example of a thoughtful discussion that could emerge is that there could be an alternative not yet considered to the current project, that I've heard some support expressed by Bunce Road neighbors who are, have been clearly saying, we would like to mitigate some of the project's potential impacts on our street, whether it's the character of the neighborhood, the screaming of the dimensions of their front yard, and the traffic safety. And they've provided us a proposal that's not in front of us tonight, that's not proposed tonight, but it's an example of what could be. And the question for my colleagues is, where could such a discussion take place if not in front of City Council? So that's kind of one of the possibilities that I have in mind. And the proposal is that instead of the current configuration, you could remove on-street parking on one side of the street of Bunce and install a bicycle lane there, a high-quality bicycle lane there. That is a new alternative that wasn't previously considered, because typically in the city of Lakewood, we don't propose removing parking from on the street. That's often considered a bridge too far. However, some neighbors did propose that and got some informal support from the other side. So that is an example, to me, of a potential solution that could achieve our active transportation goals while still being responsive to the concerns of the local residents. That way, it's not all or nothing. The choice before the city is either we abandon our active transportation goals and don't listen to local residents, or we do listen to local residents and we have no means of pursuing our active transportation goals, which is a collective goal that many of us have worked hard on a long time, including the administration. Can that be a possibility? I don't know. But I at least think that we should be facilitating that kind of conversation. And can we set a precedent by which the project has support from the local neighbors to tell others, we're for this expansion of cycling and pedestrian safety, and even if that means removing on-street parking? So that, to me, is a significant idea, and I would like to consider that, whether that is possible or whether it's too late, those are all very valid questions, and I'm not intending to show any disrespect for the hard work of the administration that's been put in on this, but to me, that's one way to provide, I hope I'm providing Mr. Zelinski a little bit more clarity than was in the writing about a hopeful intention. So this is up to all of us as a community. To me, I'd like to see the community be successful at achieving the really ambitious infrastructure investments that we, I mean, that's not even a good, that's too jargony. We're talking about maximizing Lakewood's character as a walking and biking place where you meet your neighbors because you have front porches and people care about community. We live in Lakewood not because we want to flee and hide from the world, we're here because we're connected and we enjoy each other and we share ideas and we celebrate each other's families, and it's a great place, and to me, walking and biking enhancements can take us even to another level. And we want to do that in the very best possible way. So to me, that's my concept here. Sorry for the long wind of this. Thanks, colleagues.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion to refer to Public Works and Sustainability. I think one question that I would like, and I don't know if this is for Councilwoman Bullock to be prepared for or Law Department, but, you know, as, reading through this resolution, a little unclear about, were it to be passed, what the legal authority would be, and we also, whether that would have to, since we have an ordinance that says that the decision remains with the city engineer, whether a resolution could undo those decisions. It seems to me not, but we can dig into all that in committee. So, we have a motion to refer to Public Works and Sustainability. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes.
Item 16, Report from Councilmember Strebig regarding the August 28th meeting of the Youth Council.
Councilwoman Strebig.
Thank you. Dear colleagues, the Lakewood Youth Council met on August 28th here in the auditorium at City Hall after a summer recess. After the minutes were approved, the Chair, Mel DeMert, began a conversation about coverage for the Lakewood Community Festival. The coverage would include helping another group with inflatable basketball, making signs for the tent, and a giveaway. A council member, Era, suggested a box for recommendations from the community on improvements that they would like to see, which I thought was pretty cool that she came up with that to ask for recommendations. The publicity and outreach committees were merged, and the special committee on mental health remains. This is still a priority for Youth Council, for us to keep at the foremost the mental health of the youth of our community. Members enthusiastically volunteered to lead as co-chairs, and additional members joined each committee. Interest in the Lakewood Circulator was expressed, and investigation into the standing of this initiative would be pursued. Applications to join the Youth Council will be accepted through September 21st, and contacts to local middle schools and high schools will be made to encourage membership. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to receive and file that report?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes.
Item 17, Communication from Public Works Director Gordon regarding Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Program Grant Fiscal Year 2027.
Director Gordon.
Thank you, President Kepel. Dear President Kepel, members of City Council, the Public Works Department is recommending submitting a grant application to Ohio Public Works Commission OPWC State Capital Improvement Program for the fiscal year 2027 for the following important infrastructure project, the Nicholson and Wilbert Outfall Rehab Project. I request that City Council approve and pass the attached legislation so that the project may proceed with OPWC State Improvement Program Grant Application Funding as soon as possible. Please let me know if you have any further questions.
Thank you. I'll move to receive and file that communication.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes.
Item 18, Resolution 202546, a resolution to take effect immediately authorizing the city engineer to prepare and submit applications to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Program and execute, and execution of all contracts as required.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Director Gordon, we appreciate the efforts to secure funding for these important projects. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes.
Item 19, Communication from Fire Chief Fairbanks regarding fire engine purchase.
Chief Fairbanks.
Good evening, President Kepel and members of City Council. The Lakewood Fire Department respectfully requests an audience with Lakewood City Council to present an overview and update regarding our next fire engine purchase. The LFD Apparatus Committee has been hard at work diligently over the last several months to design and procure quotes from fire engine manufacturers. This purchase is budgeted for in the 2028 capital plan, and it is my intent to present our findings to council members to allow for an informed decision regarding this purchase. Please refer this communication and presentation to the committee of councils choosing. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to refer to public safety.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes.
Item 20, Communication from Assistant Planning Director Boss regarding Lakewood Zoning Refresh Project, updated.
Assistant Director Boss.
Good evening, President Kepel, members of council. Last month, the city's zoning refresh project moved through another milestone with the completion of the preliminary drafts of the refreshed district and use standards. These draft standards were informed by the Preliminary Recommendations Report, which, as reviewed during the previous update to council, represents the culmination of stakeholder engagement, community survey, and existing conditions conformity analysis work from our project consultant team at Houssail Levine. Prior to this update, preliminary drafts of the following documents were worked and reviewed by both the city administration as well as the Zoning Policy Administration or Advisory Committee, the land use definitions, zoning district standards, and use standards. The intent of this communication is to provide these preliminary drafts to all members of council with an opportunity for a more detailed discussion in committee as we prepare to continue our work, or continue our work with development and sign standards as well as subdivision, zoning procedures, and definitions. As previously covered, all updated standards, procedures, and definitions will be worked through various steps of drafting, engagement, review, and refinement before eventually being captured in draft legislation for council consideration. For each step of the process, the information and engagement opportunities are always published on the project website. Thank you.
Thank you. Move to refer to Housing Planning and Development.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? I encourage council members to review that information prior to the meeting. It's robust, but really good information, and I find zoning a lot more fascinating than I ever thought I would. So, please review before that meeting. All right, on the motion to refer to Housing Planning and Development, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes.
Item 21, August 2025, Finance Department Vendor Reports Submitted Pursuant to Lakewood Codified Ordinances.
Move to receive and file.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes.
Item 22, Liquor Permit Notice, Humble Origins LLC, 15400 Detroit Avenue.
And I believe we did receive this one. Dr. Vargo, any comments?
Thank you, Council President. I did review the report from Chief Fisher, and it simply reflects a change in ownership, and nothing material is changing with the business, so we see no statutory reason to object.
Great, thank you. And as is our custom, this business is in Ward Two, so Councilmember Evans?
No objection.
All right, I will move to file without objection. Do you have an objection to Humble that I'm not aware of? All right, so motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that motion passes. All right, we are to public comment on any remaining topics. So, when I call your name, you've all seen it in action already tonight, you come up to the microphone, it's already on, I can see the green dot, so you don't have to push anything. When I call your name, come up. If you feel comfortable, you can give your address. You'll have up to five minutes. You address the chair, that's me. Please avoid personalities, and away we go. All right, so first up, Bonnie Sykes.
You are no doubt aware of the discussions concerning the possible closing of an elementary school. While the decision rests with the school board, it's also very much a whole-community issue. Elected officials do not operate in a vacuum, and a school closure will run counter to priorities that you closure will run counter to priorities that you, the city council, have publicly supported. Number one is safety. In 2024, you passed the Act of Transportation and Safety Action Plans, which make traffic safety a priority. Closing a school will mean more children crossing busy streets as well as increased vehicle traffic as more parents drive their children further distances to their elementary school and to the proposed centralized preschool. Both outcomes increase the risk of accidents and undermine your stated goals of safer streets. The Climate Action Plan. In 2023, you adopted this wise plan with the stated aim to reduce automobile use and promote walking and biking for children and families. Closing a school will result in more and longer car trips and greater emissions, and thereby defeating these admirable goals that you passed. And then population. We're always on the cusp of the 50,000 population threshold, which determines access to certain grants. We must stay above that number. Closing a school raises the red flag to potential families for looking for quality school districts. They could easily choose a different community, and in addition, we could lose current family residents. So if the school board is considering something that runs counter to your enacted policies, it's time to have a discussion with their members. Prior to the school board vote in October, maybe you could strategize with them to explore ideas like attracting new residents to Lakewood. You've just told us about the 300 new housing units, and then add in Barry Buick properties. We don't know how many students will be coming in. And then we could explore ideas like attracting new residents to Lakewood, market our city, send the message we're a dynamic, walkable community instead of turning our backs what has given value to Lakewood for decades. Our schools are perhaps Lakewood's finest asset. Taxpayers have spent lavishly and unflinchingly to build structures that we are rightly proud of. Resorting to the drastic measure of closing an elementary school would not only negatively impact the families in that neighborhood, but the entire Lakewood community as well. And once a school is closed, it's not coming back. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Fermin Maldadano, I apologize. I don't think I was saying any of that right.
Fermin Maldadano?
Okay.
Hello, my name is Fermin. I'm all-year bike commuter who uses a bus for Aaron's Recreation of Work. I just want to point out an issue with the alternatives to not using the multi-use path or not having the multi-use path. Each year, I experience firsthand what it's like to commute outside of a car during the winter. You are forced to ride alongside a road with multi-ton vehicles as all the other options are covered in snow. If safety is the goal, then multi-use path is the best way to do it, especially for the winter. Unlike what we currently have, multi-use paths are actually plowed during the winter. You can see examples of that in the Metro Park. They do this basic job at plowing. None of this plan would happen if we didn't implement the multi-use path. The path is, will greatly benefit seniors and the handicap. They will be able to walk or wheel to their destinations without obstruction or difficulty while maintaining their independence during the winter, so there's no snow or ice blocking during, blocking the west side of the Bunts, of the Bunts side, west side of the street. The opposite, the opposition calls for alternative routes, but they don't consider what happens when the snow hits, when the snow hits. These routes become obstructed and straight up unfeasible for those who do not have a car. Main roads, main roads get plowed priority when side roads are, don't really, are less so. Without infrastructure like multi-use paths, any alternative is kind of dead in the water, like getting around other than doing that way. Every winter, I witness powertrain users forcing the shared road with multi-ton cars and vehicles. This, this multi-use path can end these, these dangerous situations from happening in the first place. The idea of complete streets is make it safe for all, all year round. Thank you for your listening and your consideration.
Thank you. All right. I don't, I don't see Roger. Ryan Burdstrom? May have left, okay. Oh, Kim McDonald, I've got you again. Did you want to come up again?
No.
Okay. And, oh, Cassie, did you want to come up again?
Yeah. Thank you. We've talked a lot about things that make Lakewood special and that draw a lot of the community members here and allow them to stay here, especially the schools, walkability, bikeability, active transportation options. So I just wanted to plug a few upcoming events and invite the community to participate in those. So one next week is hike and bike week at the schools, so please, please work with your fellow families at the schools that your children attend to make that happen. Set up some bike, bike pools, and talk with your neighbors, so that way your kids can get to school safely that way. But thank you to everyone who's participated in making this something that's reoccurring and is, I think, getting better and better each time we put it on. So please participate in that. And then the second is Bike with the Mayor. So we have that coming up on October 7th at 6:00 PM at Kaufman Park. So very much looking forward to that. There's been a lot of hard work put into that. We appreciate Mayor George for agreeing to participate, as well as many of our council members, other city leaders, and employees. So very much looking forward to having you all engaged in those events, and thank you again for working with us to put them on.
Thank you. I just drove by one of the schools today, and they have some cool slow-down Ranger Round signs up that I thought were kind of cool, and always good advice. Okay, I think that is everyone who has signed in. Is there anyone else? No. Did you, if you want to go again? Yeah, sure. I mean, that's. Okay, yeah, sure, come on up.
Hello, Amy Herberger, 1448 Bunce Road. Twenty-one reasons to reconsider the Bunce Road multimodal path. Good evening, Mayor George and members of City Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here on behalf of hundreds of Lakewood residents deeply concerned about the proposed Bunce Road multimodal shared use path. After reviewing the plan and process, it's clear the project is being rushed without proper justification or community support, and once it's done, the damage cannot be undone. This feels driven more by a deadline than by thoughtful planning or general engagement with the people who live here. Let me briefly highlight why this plan needs to be paused and reevaluated. There's no clear demonstrated need for a multimodal path on Bunce Road. City data shows less than 0.03% of traffic on Bunce is from bikes. No traffic studies have been shared. How does this improve safety? We don't know, because no data has been provided. Actually, the small amount of data collected does not support this at all. The path leads nowhere. Cleveland has no desire to connect to the path. Public input has been insufficient. Most residents didn't know about this until the design decisions were made. One public meeting in early 2024 is not true engagement. Alternatives were ignored. Options like bike lanes used elsewhere in Lakewood were not fully explored. This is a road project with an add-on. This multimodal 10-foot path was tacked on to a street and sewer repair project, not tailored to the real needs of cyclists, pedestrians, or Bunce Road residents. Over 1,400 residents have signed a petition opposing this project. That's a majority of people you represent. The design is unsafe, with 116 in driveways and intersections, sections in just 1.5 miles. This path creates constant conflict points for users, especially seniors and children. It contradicts safety's best practices. National guidelines advise against shared use paths in dense residential areas like Bunce. Pedestrians and fast-moving e-bikes don't mix. Collision risks go up, especially with no clear rules, signage, or enforcement in place. It's an old idea that time has passed, and it destroys the walkability of the current neighborhood. There are also legal risks. Conflicts between path users and homeowners will open the city up to liability. Residents were never properly notified. Major infrastructure changes deserve more than a fine print in meeting minutes. It also removes nearly all mature trees on the west side of Bunce. That's not progress. That's permanent loss of green space and shade. No environmental review has been done. What about stormwater, the heat island effect, or wildlife impact? It worsens air quality. Replacing a residential sidewalk with a 10-foot tar path removes over 100 mature trees and increases exposure to carcinogens like benzene and PHAs, PHs. The cost isn't justified. There's no cost-benefit analysis to, no projected usage, and no clear maintenance plan. Winter maintenance is a major issue. Who's clearing the snow? Who is paying for this? There are even higher priorities. Flooding, school safety, and basic infrastructure, all more pressing than a costly path few will use. What are we doing here? It ignores the electric mobility. There's no rules for e-bikes, scooters, leaving room for chaos and injury. It lacks vision. This is one-size-fits-all design forced onto a neighborhood where it doesn't belong. And most importantly, it doesn't reflect the will of the people. Lakewood wants smart, sustainable infrastructure and does not, but not at the cost of trees, safety, home values, and trust. We urge you to pause this project, re-engage the community, and pursue safer, smarter alternatives, removing park, if removing parking is needed, but save our trees, protect our health, and invest in solutions that fit Lakewood future. A 10-foot tar path doesn't belong on Bunce Road. It moves, if this move, remove, moves forward, everyone will lose. The city does not need another costly mistake. Let's proceed with care and due diligence before a serious and irreversible error is made. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Herberger, did you want to come back up?
Matt Herberger, 1448 Bunce Road. I wrote this all down before, so if some of it talks about what other people have talked about, I apologize, but I know I look really young, but I'm actually old. And back in the day, you know, compromise was the way of politics. It wasn't a dirty word. It was actually how things got done. No one got exactly what they wanted or everything they wanted, but everybody got a little bit of something. And I think that's, that's democratic, and that's fair, and that's just. That's why I appreciate, we talked earlier about this, this at least open public, more public input into the process. You know, there's a lot going on today in this world, in politics. I think people are tearing each other apart. They're turning each other down, whether they're in the same party or different parties. And it's, can be terrifying at times. And I think I don't, I want to say that I don't have any enemies here, whether it's in the administration or in the city council or my fellow citizens. They're, they're not my enemies. And in fact, I think all of us probably share very, very similar values. And I'm sure if we all sat down, we'd all agree to a lot of things. You know, I just want to point out that, you know, one of the things we probably can all agree on is we want to see Lakewood remain a progressive city. But progress doesn't come by leaps and bounds. It has to come incrementally. That's true progress. That's lasting progress. And, you know, there's an old adage, you got to crawl before you can walk, and you got to walk before you can run. And I think, you know, when we talk about the multimodal path planned, it's, it's maybe looking to make a 40-year leap in progress, when we need to look at a five-year leap in progress. And we need to look at a way that we can move forward that's equitable and just for everyone. You know what? I'll say goodnight to that. Thank you all. That's it.
Thank you. All right. I think that's everyone I have signed in. Did I miss anyone? Come on up, Ms. Blackmore. Yep.
Beth Blackmore, Broccoli Avenue. I just wanted to quickly say, you know, with these new developments that are going in at the top of my street, I'm on Broccoli, the Barry Buick project, and also with the pit, these rents are quite substantial that are going to be charged at these developments. And I am extremely concerned because some of the most affordable housing, which is at the west end of Lakewood, and all those apartment buildings, well, I have, I stumbled across some information that three of those buildings may be getting prepared to go on the market. And when they do, if they are sold, and even if they aren't, I per, I would project that rents will be increasing substantially because of what they're getting at these new apartments. I don't expect that they will hold at their current 1,200 a month levels for a two-bedroom, which is very reasonable and very affordable. My daughter's in one of them. I'm scared to death she's going to move back home. I just got her out of the house. So, you know, and she's got a decent job with DFAST, and the fact that she, that's affordable for her. I mean, she couldn't afford more. She couldn't afford to move into one of these apartments that are going in at the end of our street, or she couldn't afford to move into the apartments at the pit. Even, even at the affordable rents, which I, which from my understanding, affordable, they're calling between 1,500 and 1,800 a month. That's what I, I think I understand that to be. She couldn't afford that. I mean, and she, you know, makes a entry-level salary at DFAST, and she's got great benefits and everything, but that's about the extent of what she can afford. So I'm very concerned about, that's what I wanted to say, I'm very concerned about the knock-on effects of these developments and their rents, because all of the rents will even go up further because of this. Because of those developments, rents in Lakewood are again going to leap up. And I just think, I'm concerned about our population collapsing here in Lakewood. I'm very concerned about it. There was two other people that said, one, one that said tonight, you know, we've got a level of census that we need to stay at to qualify for certain things. And, you know, we may be looking at getting well under that if we are not careful about housing opportunities in Lakewood. So anyways, that's it. That's all I wanted to say. Thanks. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. All right. It's everybody that have signed in. Last chance. Okay. All right. So announcements from council colleagues. Vice President Baker.
Quickly, hike and bike week. Slow down every day when kids are going to school, but particularly next week, a lot of kids will be on bikes. Secondly, I-90, take your time. The exits closed, the McKinley. I ride my bike past it every day to bring my kids to school. There's a giant crash today. Just slow down, look at the detour signs, take your time, give yourself five more minutes. That infrastructure hasn't been touched since it was built in the 70s, so it's, it's due. So just take your time, and in three or four years, we'll have a new highway. So thanks.
It's better to be late than the belated. All right. Councilwoman Hamilton Steiner.
And just commenting again, I think Lakewood, please put out a nice little PSA about the sun, and I drive on 90 going east, and it's, you know, the traffic, but then the sun and the glaring. So just be mindful, it's that time of year where the sun's switching, so just be careful when you're driving, make sure your windows are clean, and all that good stuff. So keep that in mind.
Thank you. Councilmember Evans.
The Pride Picnic this Saturday, Kaufman Park at noon. Hope to see some folks there.
Thank you. Announcements from the administration? Announcements from the administration? Nope. All right, then, no further business to come before this body. Without objection, adjourned.